Good morning. My computer says it's 10 o'clock, so at this time I will call to order the March 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. At this time, I would ask you to, we do have a lunch break planned at noon, however, once again, if our agenda looks like it's going to be able to be completed, if we're at noon and it looks like it's going to be completed in very short order, then we probably will not break at noon, so we'll just go ahead and power through that particular item. So anyways, with that, I would ask you to all stand and ask Commissioner Noah Sad to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in pledging allegiance to the greatest flag in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending today, and I would like to, we don't have on the agenda yet an invocation, however, we are reaching out to our clergy in the county to hopefully come forward and volunteer to join us every other Thursday to give us a short invocation. So I would ask you to look at the wall behind you, we do have the words "In God We Trust", and so in that process, and strategically placed there is the arrow of Douglas County pointing up to that motto, "In God We Trust." So I would ask that the Lord, whichever Lord you respect and believe in, guide us in our deliberations today to the benefit of our county, so thank you. So at this time, we'll go into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light, which indicates you have 30 seconds left, and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, you'll see, you'll hear a beep, and at that time, we ask you to conclude your comments and sit down. In addition to public, opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified as for possible action and closing public comment. So at this time, we will open the floor to public comment, and we'll do that here in the chambers, and then after which, we'll go to public comment online. So, Starett.
Virginia Starett, I would ask that items B and D on the consent calendar be pulled for discussion.
Okay, items B and D as in dog. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional public comments in chambers? Mr. Gaines. I would ask also, in consideration, please silence all electronic devices, and when you come to the microphone, state your name and sign in for the record. Thank you.
Ted Gaines, I presented Mr. Coverly there with a binder of just miscellaneous. I've worked with Mr. Ingles on some battery stuff, these very toxic, bad things. I'd like if I talked to Todd Carlini about it, if Dan there needs some assistance from you guys, I would appreciate, look at it for his first responders. They get to these cars before anybody else are, and these electric cars are very toxic. Anyhow, I appreciate that, Dan, and hopefully it helps your officers. Now, on February 3rd, we had a meeting, we changed the times of our meeting to 10 o'clock. The meetings have been 1 o'clock, as far back as '07, as the computer goes. I was coming here in the 80s, the meetings were 1 o'clock, but because one of our commissioners once wanted to change it when he first got in, now it's changed to 10 o'clock. And I didn't realize that at the last meeting, when the meeting was over, that person ran for the door. When I was watching the news that night, Douglas High was playing, so he went to watch his kids. Mark, you informed us before the meeting started that we may go right through the lunch hour to get out of here early. That's not honoring the citizens and residents of the county, that's honoring the person that wanted to get out of here for the basketball game and the board. You guys are here to serve the people, and if you're gonna do personal favors for our board members and whatnot, you should resign, Mark. You should step down from that seat, because you informed us before, and I realized that's what it was about. So I'd like to see the meetings go back to 1 o'clock, personally. At the same time, I tried to explain to you guys about the people telling you stories. Mr. Knowles sat there, questioned our building official, and about, I told about the lies, the things that happened to me to you, but I know where they get it. Wesley there, at the end of the meeting, gave us a big story on the convention center.
Mr. Gaines, I'm gonna interrupt you for just a second. We acknowledge your presence as Mr. Gaines, and I would ask that you also respond to us in our surnames as well, please. Thank you.
When you earn my respect, I will do that. I have here, Mr. Wesley Rice had explained something about the venues and da-da-da, it's not costing us a dime, the building, the convention center's not costing the residents a dime. I want to submit this paper for record. You've already got $2.5 million of our money, Wesley, so you deceived the people. Well, I don't know, it's on record here from Douglas County, so you're gonna get another million, too, the 30th of June. Maybe you'll kick that back to us so we can use it for inspectors, so.
Mr. Gaines, thank you.
Sean Meehan for the record, on the prior request of a member of the public to pull B and D from the agenda, I guess they can do that, or I don't know what the rules are with, anyway. Mr. Chairman, as the chairman of your Airport Advisory Committee, I wanted to let you know, because I won't be able to be here probably if this comes up for debate later due to a pre-existing appointment, on item B, that came before, was debated, changes made, and voted out of our Airport Advisory Committee to recommend this to you. Item D did not, and I will tell you, as a member of the Advisory Committee and a member of the public, I won't speak as your Airport Advisory Chairman since we didn't address it, that under county code, it is my opinion that that issue is not in the purview of our committee. However, I did consult with the Airport Director and the Airport Manager. I believe it was done properly according to FAA rules that apply. Market studies were done and things like that, and it's very important that we don't unnecessarily bog down the process. That's just my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meehan, I had some questions just before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I realize we're still in public comment, but item B was pulled, that is regarding the airport rules and regulations. Item D was also pulled, as I understand it, but that is a resolution regarding the board norms and procedures, so they're not related, they're not related at all, so I'm not sure. Did you say item D was not?
B and D, Mr. Chairman, B and D were requested to be withdrawn by Ms. Starett, and to be fair, I do not know her reasons. That may be perfectly something I need to be aware of. But anyway, B was regulations that came before our Advisory Committee for an update. There were edits, many, many excellent edits that Ms. Starett put in. We all know her capacity as an English professor, and it was very good. Those were voted on and approved, so that should be ready for your processing. Item D did not come before the Airport Advisory Committee.
Nor would it, nor would it, that's what I'm trying to point out.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So again, I don't know what the, but it can come before citizens, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't believe she was speaking on behalf of the Airport Board when she pulled item D. Is that correct, Ms. Starett?
I wasn't speaking on behalf of the Board.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, just wanted to get clarification on that so that we understand that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Linda Reeve, and my husband and I are going to be moving up here to TRE. My father-in-law lived there in the 80s, and we have taken out his old mobile, and we're putting in a Clayton Homes, new manufactured home. And my husband's, pardon me, occupation isn't bishop, is he has his own water well company. Sorry, my voice. He drills wells, does water tanks, all of that. And then we found out that we were gonna have to have a sprinkler system installed in our new home for some exorbitant $25,000 or whatever, and we're only, I think, .7 miles from the fire station, and then we heard that when there's enough money, that we could have fire hydrants for the whole neighborhood, and then my husband's talking about maybe putting in a storage tank. Anyway, we wanted to be exempt from the internal sprinkler system, and I have a question. It wouldn't be so difficult for us if the sprinklers were gonna be installed, say, on the roof from the wildfires?
So, Ms. Reeve, and I don't enjoy, so with all due respect, I'm not trying to interrupt you. That item is on our administrative calendar, our agenda, on item number nine. We will hear, we will be hearing that later. Are you, are you not, you do not have the ability to stay until that item is heard, or, or, because we would ask you to speak on that item as it comes forward to us.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, no, I understand. You're new to our county, and so I just, yeah, so, yeah. You'll have, you'll have three minutes at that time to speak in that regard also, okay? So you've given us a little heads up.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take up time now, thank you.
No, 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 that's fine. I just, you know, you're new to the county, so, you know, and we enjoy having members of the public here, so, you know.
All right.
We look forward to hearing from you in a little while. Again, thank you. Okay, do we have any additional public comment here in chambers? Seeing none, I would, yes.
I'd like to make a public comment. It's incumbent upon all the members of this Board of Commissioners that January and February are the driest on record for the county. In the last decade, we have only had one good season to replenish aquifers. Our situation is getting critical in some areas. Gardinerville Ranchos has had to do a tie-in with the township of Gardinerville on their aquifer. There are places out in Fish Springs where the arsenic content of the water has become so elevated that people can't drink it anymore, and the trees are even dying out there. So it's getting to a point where we don't seem to be getting any additional moisture. We have a voluntary reduction in water consumption of 25% that nobody seems to be paying attention to. I would recommend we take that to 25% mandatory and curtail all additional projects for development, which includes administrative hearings. There's a project out in Ruenshof, 10 acres, one acre lots with septic tanks and wells, which is gonna put further demand on that aquifer out there. The area simply cannot sustain the continued accelerated growth that we're having. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Ms. Johnson, do you have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. We do have a couple people online with their hand raised. Michael, do you have opening public comment? Michael Smith, do you have opening public comment? No response, I'll move on. Ellie Waller, do you have opening public comment?
Yes, I do, thank you. Ellie Waller, I did send in a pre-comment on the March 9th State of the South Shore Community address. I have no reason to be a member of the chamber, but I do like to keep up to date on what's going on, and this is a unique opportunity to hear from the representatives, one which will be Commissioner Gardner. I'm not gonna pay the $10, so I'm not going to attend. I'm just wanting to point out, I'm surprised there's a price tag for this kind of meeting. My second comment is because I cannot attend today, is on item 11 for possible action discussion to authorize the settlement of a lawsuit filed by nine plaintiffs in the United States District Court. This is on the VHR vacation home rental policy. I've attended two of the VHR Advisory Board meetings. I'm looking forward to this work in progress and more amendments to further clarify to all citizens that are VHR owners and are not, so they know what to expect in their neighborhoods as well. I'm looking forward to the clarification for justification, the clarity of two additional persons allowed only for VHRs with four bedrooms or less, which would allow for up to 10. That is crystal clear. In upcoming meetings, VHR owners should understand that. I'm also looking forward to a little more clarification on the definition of a bedroom, although clearly stated in the ordinance, must be designed to be used as a sleeping room and for no other primary use. Again, this has been an issue and taken up lots of time at those VHR Advisory Board meetings. I'd like to personally thank Sam Taylor for coming to all of those, as well as the fire chief Gavin. These meetings have been four to six hours because the people that have VHRs are still trying to better understand what the code is stating. Other issues in the future for consideration should be determination of what no more than 50 people allowed actually means. And again, I just really want to reach out and thank the entire board, I'm hoping some are listening or will have listened to this after, for their due diligence and everything they bring to the table on the vacation home rentals. We are the best in the county. I'm providing a summary at their request of what the other jurisdictions are doing, and again, we are outstanding in the VHR arena and ordinance.
Are there any others?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. I will check with Michael Smith again. Michael Smith, do you have opening public comment?
I was here for the brain injury discussion.
Okay. Do you have opening public comment, or are you just here for the proclamation?
I'm here for the proclamation.
Okay. I can promote you at that time right now, we're on opening public comment. So I'm gonna lower your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's no further public comment online.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and thank you, Ms. Waller, for your kind comments in regards to our efforts in regards to the vacation home rentals. So I know it's all, I know it's appreciated by the five of us, so. Anyways, at this time, approval of the agenda for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner, to combine two or more items, agenda items for consideration, and remove items from the agenda or delay discussion related to items on the agenda. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. At this time, we'll go to the approval of the previous minutes for possible action to discussion, to approve the draft minutes of January 20, 2022, regular meeting of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion for that. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by, I believe, Mr. Noah Sad, to approve the minutes of the January 20, 2022 regular meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes 5 to 0. At this time, we will adjourn as the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. I would remind the members that Sheriff Coverly serves as a member of this liquor board, so the, there are six available votes for this. I do that for my own remembrance, too, so. Okay, so Captain Mitch Tarian.
Good morning, Captain Ron Mitch Tarian for the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
It's your turn.
I was supposed to read it in the, into the record, aren't I? Okay, thank you for your, thank you. For possible action, discussion to approve the addition of Jessica Escalera to the existing onsite unrestricted and packaged liquor retail liquor license for Genoa Country Store LLC DBA, Genoa Country Store. Jessica Escalera has signed a waiver of notice of hearing, Genoa Country Store LLC DBA. Genoa Country Store is located at 2299 Main Street, Genoa, Nevada, 89411. Now, Captain Mitch Tarian.
This applicant has met all the requirements, and the Sheriff's Office is not in objection of this action.
Okay. This, for possible action, so I will ask if there's any questions of the Board. Seeing no, does any member of the public have any public comment? Seeing no public comment there. Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Seeing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the addition of Jessica Escalera to the existing onsite unrestricted and packaged retail liquor license for Genoa Country Store, doing business as Genoa Country Store.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the addition of Jessica Escalera to the existing onsite unrestricted and packaged liquor, retail liquor license for Genoa Country Store LLC. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes 6 to 0. Thank you, Captain Mitch Tarian.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time then, we will adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, and we will go to the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items B and D, which have, at the request of Virginia Starett, been withdrawn from the consent calendar and moved to the administrative calendar.
I move that the consent calendar be approved as presented with the exception of items B as in boy, D as in dog.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the consent calendar minus item B and D. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. We will now move to the administrative agenda. I'll be reading items into the agenda for the public record, and we'll go from there. So we will go to item B for possible action, discussion on the possible approval of updates to the Minden Tahoe Airport Rules and Regulations. We have Mr. Monak and Ms. Thompson with us today. We're seeing a lot of you lately. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Bobby Thompson for the record, Airport Director of the great Minden Tahoe Airport. The rules and regulations were an update to a previous document for several months, even prior to my returning to the community, thankfully. These were worked on by the AAC and staff, and at a recent meeting with the Airport Advisory Committee, they were passed unanimously to bring forward to this board. And of course, as always with any documents at the airport, the ADA person assigned to the airport has reviewed them as well.
Thank you. Any questions by the Commissioners? Then we'll go to public comment on this item, since it's an action item. Ms. Starett, you're the one that pulled this off, so.
It would be funny if I didn't make a public comment now, right? Okay. I am a member of the Airport Advisory Committee, but I am not here in that capacity. I'm here as someone who is acquainted with legal documents and language, and also with our jewel of an airport. I have become aware of the addition of a section in the rules and regulations before you today that addresses condo hangars at the airport. First, I would note that there are already condo hangars at the airport, so this appears to be shutting the barn door after the cows get out. to be shutting the barn door after the cows get out. I should also note that while I am not against condo hangars per se, I am concerned that providing condo hangars is not even close to providing hangars for lease or rent on a monthly or yearly basis. A condo hanger has to be purchased, and I believe they are going for around $100,000 or more. That would leave out those plane owners who don't have the wherewithal or desire to spend that much to house their plane. The Airport Master Plan lists increasing the availability of hangar space as a main goal of airport management. I do not believe any new rentable or leasable hangar space has been added in the last few years. If the current management is enraptured with the concept of condo hangars and the county doesn't discourage this, asking instead for management to find a way to add rentable or leasable hangar space, then I don't think that comports with the intention of the Airport Master Plan. My further concern on the condo section in the rules and regulations is that I believe the language in these rules puts the county at risk of lawsuits. To make all owners in a condo owners association jointly and severally liable for a default by any one owner should make the purchase of a condo hanger unfinancable as well. Imagine if a neighbor of yours down the street tore down his garage and you are in a homeowners association where each owner is jointly and severally liable. And then the result of that guy's default is that your mortgage is canceled despite your down payment and all the monthly payments you have been making regularly. That's the way the condo hanger rules read. I imagine there is a strong profit motive pushing the condo hanger idea, but I'm not sure the county should be encouraging it. Thank you.
Before you leave, Ms. Sterrett, could you identify which page of our packet that you were referring to or on that so we can get a better eye?
Well, it would be the rules and regulations.
Well, I'm, okay. Is there?
It would be the very last part of the rules and regulations. It's the very last section that's, that was being added.
Okay. I'm trying to find it. Yeah, that's what I'm asking. The Commissioners are lost, a little lost here trying to find this page so we can actually look at the wording, so.
And if I might be able to provide some assistance, this is Carrie Rosser. It's on page 241 of the packet.
241 of the packet.
Chairman, if I may, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Page 210 defines what a condo is, which is a reference to NRS. So if there's any ambiguity.
Is that NRS specifically airport condo hanger or just condo?
And if I might address that question, Carrie Rosser, again for the record, it is condominiums in general.
So 293 is the redline version of the policy. I believe the reference Ms. Rosser gave us to the clean copy.
It's redline because it's all new.
Did you have a question? Okay. You want to turn on your mic? Okay, there you go.
Could we get a further explanation on exactly what is a condo hanger?
Well, I actually, Bobby Thompson, for the record, I actually prefer the term hanger owner association because condo gives sort of the image that there's people living there, which of course there are not. But the first hanger owner association was developed back in 2016. As of today, we have 81 hangars that fall into that category, ranging in price from $150,000 to almost $400,000. Obviously, the taxes from that come down to the county, which is very nice. And I can also tell you that those hangars were cash deals. There weren't mortgages on them. Not that we had any say in that, but that was just how it happened to be when the people wanted a hanger, they had the wherewithal to make cash deals. The hanger owner association, like a condominium association, does put peer pressure on all the tenants in those hangars, which is very good for the county and the airport, because then if someone is violating the rules and regulations on the airport, their tenants, the other tenants in those hangars are going to help us clear up the issue and solve it probably quicker and simpler than if it wasn't HOA. I 100% agree with Ms. Sterrett that we need hangars at the airport. We have a waiting list of almost 80 now, and people pay to be on that waiting list. There's also a waiting list of almost 40 of people wanting to purchase hangars on the airport. We will be bringing to you in the next few weeks some additional development of private hangars, but it turns out that most of the people that are wanting to develop hangars with private money also prefer the hanger owner association because it assists them in the same way it assists the county, which giving them better control going forward. Only one of those hangars since 2016 has been resold, and that was one in the original block. That original block was built by an individual that's no longer in the county. They built them and then leased them out on a month-to-month basis, and they actually defaulted on their bank loan. And then the bank sold it to investors that then turned it into a hanger owner association because they felt that was financially better for the bank, and then those hangars were sold. The increase in value of that hanger from the original purchase to when it was sold just last year was triple, much like you see in residential properties around the county. Now, going forward, we're exploring, in fact, we're talking to a hanger company that builds hangars about the potential of perhaps the county building them. We naturally have to look at the ROI on that to make sure it's financially the correct move for the county, which we will explore and present you the pros and cons of that. In the meantime, on the west side of the airport, there's basically zero amount of land to build that's currently available. But we would hope that we can build those hangars in the future on the west side as well as the east side. Excuse me, I said the west side of the airport's already full, but we're hoping we can build and have other individuals that are willing to build. We have other people that have built singular hangars. There's one getting ready to be constructed now. The building materials are already out there. So there are individuals that are building their own hanger on a land leased with the county. So we're very happy that there's a lot of activity at the airport, a lot of diverse activity, and we think that's very healthy for the financial status of the airport going forward.
I understand the financial side of it, but is this a common practice at airport? I mean, these people live in the hangars with their airplane and their car, like a house?
Bobby Thompson, for the record, I'm sorry if I give you any indication that people are living in. Absolutely no one lives in a hanger on the airport. Zero. It's strictly an association like a condo association, but it's only for the storage of aircraft.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tarkanian.
Ms. Thompson, can you address the statement by Ms. Sterrett of that there's joint and sever liability for any of the owners?
Much like in a condominium association, they have bylaws and they have officers. And when you, before you purchase a hanger, you sign on to those bylaws and you accept those liabilities, much the same as you would if you were buying a condominium to live in. So there's no difference there. So there's bylaws that were developed by their attorneys that they sign on to.
Okay, so, but those are certain regulations. Let's say somebody was negligent in their monitoring or maintenance of their hanger and someone got injured. Would the other owners of hangars be responsible?
No, each hanger has their own general liability policies. That's a requirement of the airport. For each person on the airport that has an aircraft has to have a $1 million general liability policy at a minimum, which names the airport and the county as additionally insured.
So then, again, I'm confused with what Ms. Sterrett was trying to say. Where is the joint and sever liability with the condo owners if it's not with the general liability?
I would pass that question on to Ms. Rosser, our ADA, because I'm not an attorney.
And Carrie Rosser, for the record, and just also to clarify, as of two days ago, no longer an ADA, but an independent contractor working for the county. And to address the question of joint and sever liability, the point of this is when we, as the county, enter into a lease with a tenant, that tenant in a condo association situation is the association. And so if there is a unit owner, someone who has an airplane that they store in a condominium unit, who does something that is a violation of the lease, for example, they store materials that aren't authorized, or, you know, they bring firearms onto the airport, you know, whatever it is that they might do that's a violation of the lease, typically, our language would allow us to go against the tenant specifically, which is the association. By adding this additional layer, we're able to go after the tenant as well as the unit owner. And so that if there's something that requires a cure, for example, if there's a cost to the county to correct the problem that comes up, we're able to go after both the tenant that has engaged in whatever behavior that is problematic as well as the association.
All right. So the joint and sever liability is between, is with the tenant and the association, not between the tenant and the other tenants?
Bobby Thompson, for the record.
Hang on a second. So I am at fault here, and I want to, I want to get us back on the proper scheme of things, okay? I opened it up for public comment, and yet we're getting into a dialogue of back and forth with, with the presenter again by the commission. We will have an opportunity to do that, but I haven't finished, we haven't finished public comment. So at this time, I would like to ask if there's any additional public comment in the gallery. If not, then we'll go to asking Ms. Johnson if there's public comment on record, online, and then we'll bring it back to the board for further questions. So I apologize for my oversight in that regard, but are there, is there anybody else in chambers which wishes to offer public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, is there anybody that is online offering public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is one person who has their hand raised. Michael Smith, do you have public comment on item B?
No.
Okay, I'm going to lower your hand.
Thank you.
When we get to the proclamation, I'll promote you.
Yeah, it says lower hand on mine, so I don't know. Sorry.
Thank you. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Now we will bring it back to the board for further questions. Are there other, Mr. Ingles?
So this condo association, they monitor themselves, but does the airport regulations of hangars preempt the HOA?
And I'm sorry if that question was directed to me, Carrie Rosser, again, for the record. The condominium association declaration would be subordinate to the airport rules and regulations as well as the lease. So to the extent that there's any obligation that arises directly from the rules or regulation or the lease, that would be passed down to the unit owners.
Any additional comments or questions, Mr. Commissioners? Okay. Ms. Thompson, you had additional comments?
Bobby Thompson, excuse me, Bobby Thompson, for the record, I would like to share with you one example that happened this week, as a matter of fact, in a bank of hangars that are part of an HOA hanger owner association. We had a tenant that had decided to run a commercial business out of the hangars, which is not permissible in those hangars. We have specific hangars that are available for commercial businesses. We contacted the HOA. The HOA immediately remedied the situation and discontinued that activity, in fact, evicted that tenant. He was still just renting a hanger in there. And I want to say that I certainly respect what Ms. Sterrett is saying, and I understand from where she comes, because previously her and her husband did have an aircraft based on the airport in a rental hanger. Those hangars lease expired and they're all going to a hanger owner association, so I can certainly respect her position on this.
Mr. Tarkanian.
Ms. Thompson, I appreciate, first of all, your explanation on the joint sever liability and on your comments about the condo ownership. But the point Ms. Sterrett made certainly makes a lot of sense. If we're not going to have any rentals currently, and I know you said that you're going to try to and you're going to bring it before the board, it basically eliminates any, but that does not have that amount of cash flow, which is certainly, I don't think, the intent of the board. There should be the ability, if it's on the county property, to be able to rent a hanger as well as purchase one, don't you agree? And so how soon can we remedy that?
Thank you, Commissioner Bobby Thompson, for the record. We have over 100 hangars that are rentals on the airport now, 80 of which that are owned by the county. We just don't have enough.
So, Ms. Thompson, I had a question. This appears to be a completely new section to your rules and regulations. Is that a correct statement? So was this particular section vetted by the Airport Advisory Committee? And were these issues discussed at that time, if it was?
Bobby Thompson, for the record, that section was part of the discussion of the AAC when they unanimously approved it. I would have to refer to the minutes to know specifically what that discussion was.
Okay. If, if, if we were to, I'm questioning whether or not it would be wise to perhaps pull this particular section out of the rules and regulations as an amendment to that and have it go back for further discussion to the Airport Advisory Committee to continue to take a look at this before it, and then perhaps bring this section back to us. That's, that's, that's my observation, but certainly that's up to the rest of the board as well, so. How would you feel about that aspect, or Ms. Rosser, how would you feel about that aspect?
I would just like to provide a brief point of clarification on that. At the most recent Airport Advisory Committee meeting, as Ms. Thompson stated, this section was included in the draft paragraph, and it was specifically highlighted and discussed by the committee at that time. I believe most of Ms. Sterrett's concerns were raised during that meeting as well, and the board considered those, or the committee considered those, and notwithstanding that, approved the document as is.
Thank you. Mr. Ritchie, you had a comment?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you, Chairman Doug Ritchie, with the District Attorney's Office. Just, there seems to be some confusion regarding the joint and sever liability. To be clear, it's required under E2 of the rules. It's on page 39 of the document, page 242 of the packet. That's the only reference to joint and sever liability. And what the county is requiring is that the condo association have certain things within their declaration, one of which is that all the participants, voluntary participants of this association, understand that if they do something, even though the county isn't, doesn't have a contractual relationship with them, we have a contractual relationship with the association, the county can enforce, as Ms. Rosser explained, a violation against both the association and that individual tenant. To Ms. Sterrett's point, it is true that if one member of the association says, brings in toxic chemicals or weapons, the county will breach, has the ability, the option, to enforce the terms of the lease and terminate it as to all of the tenants. It's kind of like a family living together. If one of them starts shooting up the neighborhood, the landlord can kick out the whole family. That's the easiest explanation I can give as far as joint tenancy, but again, it's not the county imposing this directly on the tenants, rather, it's the county imposing this condition in the declaration that the tenant imposes on their members, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Further comment by the, or questions by the board? Sensing that, are we ready for, okay, yeah, please.
Does this clarify the concerns that Ms. Sterrett had?
Ms. Sterrett, would you please?
Yes, this is my concern, that, again, the example I gave, if your neighbor down the street did something, and you had a homeowners association, and they, and so a default occurred that couldn't be cured or something. If your mortgage holder came to you and then said, well, you no longer own your house because that thing your neighbor did down the street has brought this on you. That's possible under the way these rules are written, that an owner of one of these hangar units could be deprived of his unit because somebody else in a building that's a part of that association, some other person he doesn't even know, does a default. There is a provision that allows the county, in the document also, out of its largesse, to allow that person to continue in that relationship in that condo. But it's dependent on the county's largesse, which makes me think that this does put the county at some risk of lawsuits should these kinds of incidents occur.
Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your indulgence. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. There's another item coming up soon, the VHR regulation. Perhaps another example might be helpful. A property owner may own the property, and then a tenant comes in, has a contract to use the property for a period of time, and they have a party or start a fire. The county has the ability to go in and cite not only the person who started the fire, but the property owner, because the fire was on their property. I think a better example is, rather than HOA, is, is like a home where you have multiple roommates. They each, like when I was in college, each of us split, each of us have 200 bucks. What's going to happen is if I start a fire in the apartment, my other two buddies are going to be kicked out with me when the landlord comes in and kicks us all out because we burned up the living room. That's probably a better analogy than an HOA where, in an HOA, you each have your own property and you agree to rules. Whereas this is, the association owns, well, they don't actually, depends. They have the relationship with the county, and we don't have a direct relationship with any of the participants of the association. And again, Carrie Rossar knows, she's forgotten more than I know about this topic, but just to help explain this, so it's easier for the public to understand.
Go ahead.
I don't want to belabor at this point, but under Doug's scenario, they're not losing the home, you're being kicked out of a lease. Under Ms. Darrett's example, they were losing the hangar. So that would be a loss of a property, right? Which I don't think you can do based upon a, an association member violating something. Am I missing something there?
And Carrie Rossar, for the record, if I could address that. I think one thing to keep in mind in this case is there's a bit of a distinction between homeownership and a condo unit ownership on an airport. And this has, in recent years, become a much more common use structure for airport hangar ownership or rentals. And the main distinction is that, at all times, the condo unit association is operating on a lease with the county. They don't own the property. There is a fixed end date to their term having a right to possess and occupy that property. In most cases, that might be around 30, 40, 50 years, depending on the age of the lease and the amount of infrastructure that they're going to be putting in on the land. So compared to a traditional home where you would expect to have, although there are exceptions to this, of course, but in general, the expectation would be an ownership in perpetuity. This is a fixed amount of time where you just happen to have a long-term lease where you own a structure that exists on the condo, on the condominium unit parcel. One thing to keep in mind is that depending on the exact circumstances, there are cases where the condominium association has the right to remove its assets, including any structures, from the property. You know, and I can't speak without spending hours and hours on this topic about the exact circumstances where they can and can't do that. But there are times where the totality of the investment would not be lost because all these members have invested in is the airspace, basically, within the walls of the unit. That, that's the ownership of the condo unit. And so they are able to, as an association, take some amount of that investment so that not everything is lost. You know, of course, there is some risk to this. But from the county's perspective, as a landlord, you need to have some control over your tenants. And there's really no way to do that without having the ultimate power to evict them if they're engaging in unlawful activities. And I think that hazardous materials example is a good one because that's one that really puts the county at enormous risk. If you have a tenant who is pouring some hazardous material out onto the airport property within a leasehold, and you have no other way to stop them but to terminate that lease and evict the tenants altogether, then that option needs to be available to the county.
Thank you. Mr. Ingalls, you had more?
This is really convoluted. Why don't we make Ms. Thompson dictator of hangars and be done with it? I'm being facetious.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions by the, concerns by the commissioners? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item B on the consent calendar regarding the approval of the updates to the Mendon Tahoe Airport Rules and Regulations be approved as presented.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls to approve the updates to the Mendon Tahoe Airport Rules and Regulations as presented. Any further discussion? Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Darrett, for bringing that forward also. Okay, so now we'll go to item D, that was also pulled from the consent calendar by Ms. Darrett. Discussion to adopt the Resolution 2022 R-024, a resolution regarding the Board of County Commissioners' norms and procedures. This was presented by Patrick Kates. Mr. Kates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board considered the norms and procedures at the February 3 meeting, and the board indicated no desire to make any substantive change to the, to the policy, or, excuse me, to the resolution. So we're bringing it back, so it indicates that it was reviewed by the board, and that's the substance of this item. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any members of the board have questions of Mr. Kates? Okay, then we will go to public comment. Ms. Darrett?
Okay, I realize I am late to the party because you've already discussed this previously, but here goes anyway. I've had many chances over the years to consider our county's norms and procedures. I've observed firsthand the need for particular commissioners' personality ticks or to empower one commissioner control, to control a fellow commissioner. I was relieved the last time the norms and procedures came up full of vengeful changes that the document was not entertained for a vote. The suggested changes were petty and ridiculous. But in reality, a portion of the document before you is also petty and ridiculous, or perhaps a better word would be embarrassing, or even outrageous. How many norms should be needed to remind what must be perceived as immature, rude, bully commissioners to be nice? The answer must be at least five, as that is how many times a norm appears shaking its finger at the commissioners like an angry parent at a two-year-old. And how many norms should be needed to coerce a commissioner to forget that he is elected, that he is elected and owes his voters honesty and transparency, and instead to become a parrot of the party line taken by the majority of his fellow commissioners? This coercion is a violation of the First Amendment. These are not employees, they are elected officials. I have been informed that I shouldn't be concerned about how embarrassing or unconstitutional the norms are because they are mere guidelines and have no effective enforcement mechanisms anyway. All that's being done is getting a box checked off. Okay, duty to the norms and procedures met. Well, I'm not happy with that at all. I don't feel very good about a document that is riddled with childish admonitions and illegal or unethical mandates being a part of my county. We can do better, and we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darrett. Are there any additional public comments in chambers? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, are there any public comments on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have one person with their hand raised. Ellie, do you have public comment on item D?
Hi, Ellie Waller. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. As Ms. Darrett stated, this is getting into all kinds of different areas and arenas on how the board, as well as the community members, react to different situations. I, I think we're all adults, and we need to figure out how all to get along with each other. And in the future, words in a policy are always subjective. We find that in zoning codes and community development codes, which I talk about often as well. So we need to find a, a good range of the correct words for ordinances so we don't have this disparity in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Are there any additional public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Seeing no further public, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's any comments or possible actions.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Mr. Noah Satin and Mr. Ingalls.
You got in there first. Okay. I'm particularly interested in norms and procedures. And I went through the four or five pages and, and found a lot of duplications. Things that had 20 or 30 sub items could probably be declared to be part of procedure called, "How do we do business?" We have rules for that. There are rules for that, can be adopted by this board if they cared to do it. That would really cut back a lot on what the norms and procedures are. Thank you.
Mr. Ingalls?
If anybody should have anything to say about this, it would be me. I was assaulted and battered, and next time, you're going to go to federal court if you do that. I'm not going to screw around with a Nevada court. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. We've had public comments, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll stick my neck out on this one. I move that we adopt Resolution 2022 R-024, a resolution regarding the Board of County Commissioners' norms and procedures.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls to approve Resolution, adopt Resolution 2022 R-022, a resolution establishing rate, oh, I, I'll back up. I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R-024, a resolution regarding the Board of County Commissioners' norms and procedures. Sensing no further debate, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes four to one with Commissioner Noah Sad dissenting. Thank you. Okay. We will now move to the administrative calendar, administrative agenda. I'll read the items into the record, and we'll go from there. So item one, for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation, 2022 P-020 proclaiming the week of March 7 through March 11, 2022, as Brain Injury Awareness Week in Douglas County. And I have a resolution here that I would like to read into the record. Proclamation, County of Douglas, proclamation 2022 P-020 by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, declaring March 7 through 11, 2022, Brain Injury Awareness Week in Douglas County, Nevada. Whereas, data from the Nevada State Trauma Registry indicates that over 2,700 Nevadans each year are hospitalized as a result of a traumatic brain injury, TBI. And according to the registry, males outnumber females two to one for the incidence of trauma head injuries, regardless of causes. And whereas, with TBI occurring every nine seconds, this public health concern ranks as a leading cause of death and disability in children and young adults. And whereas, the four common causes of TBI are falls, struck by or against motor vehicles, and assaults, which account for the vast majority of reported TBI in Nevada. And whereas, each year in the United States, approximately 2.2 million people are treated in hospital emergencies rooms or trauma centers for head injuries, 280,000 of which are hospitalized, and 50,000 die. And whereas, many of the impacts and hazards of brain injuries could be mitigated if residents of Douglas County were more aware and proactive. And whereas, our military troops from Douglas County returning from war may have been exposed to potential brain injuries and may need our assistance. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners that March 7 through March 11, 2022, is Brain Injury Awareness Week in Douglas County, Nevada, promoting awareness for brain injuries and brain wellness, adopted on this third day of March 2022 by the Board of County Commissioners, with my signature. Mr. Smith, I believe you were online.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Some comments. So, yes, at this time, we would appreciate your comments. Thank you. I know you've been waiting on this, so.
Well, I screwed up a couple times. It's, but anyways, thank you. You did a great job of reading the proclamation. And last year, I left out the, I got a call from the Head Injury Association of Northern Nevada to let them know that they want to be contacted for any needs. And their number is 775-830-4261. And also, last year, after the, the meeting, I also was in contact with BRAIN, with Teresa Maros. And she runs a, a group that's at 775-440-1234. And it stands, BRAIN stands for Brain Recovery Assistance, and I think it's Institute. And then, so those people, I wanted to get out there. And I'm, right now, currently living in a brain injury housing, which I hope Douglas County would consider getting some into Douglas County. It's called Accessible Space. And if your planning commission could check it out, I'd appreciate it. They're 1-800-466-7722. And they're out of, I think, Minneapolis, Minnesota. They've got two in Reno, I wish I was, I stayed in one in Reno for a while. And they've got one in Carson City and a few in Vegas. So they're well tuned to Nevada. Currently in the one in South Lake Tahoe, but that's because it's the closest one I could get to Douglas County. That's where I consider my home. So hopefully someday I'll be able to move back to Douglas County. But I always spend like $350 a month for rent. And when you are disabled, that's, that's gold. So then I, and back to me personally, I got a, a Dr. Dos, a neurologist, who got me to a neurosurgeon in Stanford, and I got a shunt put into my head, and they're draining the fluid out into my stomach. And I'm getting my legs back. I'm starting to walk again. I don't know if you remember me from doing the meetings, but I was at, I was at a walker stage. And I was losing, losing my bowels and my bladder. It was getting pretty, pretty bad. And those are all fixed as well. So it's just a matter of finding the right information to get your loved ones treated and fixed. And as far as Accessible Space, getting them to independent living should be a goal. And as far as seniors, maybe doing some things to take care of your noggin as well because we're all more fragile than I think we think we are. And, and thank you, Douglas County, for doing the proclamation. And I just thank you very much. It really warms my heart. And you can go to YouTube, Nevada Trails TV, and I have four or five brain injury shows they can watch. Dr. Dos has a brain injury lecture. Dr. or Teresa Maros. Dr. Teresa Maros has an interview with me on her place in Reno, what the services are. Dr. Finoff has a lecture on sports concussions, which if you have a daughter or a grandchild or a son or any relative that's playing sports, you might want to talk to their coach about what they do about concussion protocol. And just to make sure it doesn't hurt. And then we had my show when I was in 1984 that I did out of a brain injury treatment center, us talking about the effects of brain injuries on us and the families. So it gets pretty personal. And I also had two great uncles in World War II that both got shell shocked. So I kind of grew up with it a little bit and never thought for... that I would end up in the same situation. I was attacked in 1990 by a veteran. And I hope he got help too. But it definitely changed my life. But in any case, maybe I was meant to help people. And so far, I'm doing the best I can with my charities as well as this brain injury information. And thank you again. And I'll get... I'll let you get back to work.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate your comments and we appreciate your diligence in regards to making us aware of this and bringing it forward to our community. So thank you.
Well, a lot of this thing is just information and patience because when you get a brain injury, life is hard. But life... You take it a cinch. Life's a cinch by the inch, but hard by the yard. So you just have to have little baby goals and be patient and you'll come back and be worthwhile yourself and your country and your family. So hang in there, people. Time is always a cure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go to item two now for presentation only, presentation on a Nevada tax commission's proposal to remove the Douglas County... Remove Douglas County as a guaranteed county for the supplemental city-county tax relief tax distribution pursuant to NRS 377.057. And I believe we have our chief financial officer, Terry Willoughby, presenting today. Thank you.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, we have been notified by the Department of Taxation that the county has exceeded its distributions, which means we took in more than we received for the last 12 months by an amount greater than 10%. We currently are guaranteed county. The hearing on Monday, unless a waiver is filed, would transition us to away from that to where we would receive our collected amount. And I provided them some supplemental information in the packet. And I just want to give you some idea of historically what this has been. So for the current fiscal year, so that's July through December of 2021, our collections have exceeded our distributions by almost 1.6 million. That's only for six months. Last fiscal year, 1.4 million. Before that, we were receiving more as a guaranteed county through distributions than we collected. I was notified by taxation that we still could file a waiver to remain a guaranteed county. That would mean we would look at it again in a year. But I want to... At this point, we are not intending to file a waiver unless the board gives me direction otherwise. And I know it's not an action item, but you can certainly direct staff. Doug can weigh in on that.
Thank you. I mean, so as I understand it, by your presentation, you're looking for some direction from this board should we choose to take it?
Correct.
No, okay. Thank you. Commissioners, it's a presentation item only, so we will not be accepting public comment. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Yes, sir. Ms. Willoughby, it's my understanding that since the pandemic and financially, things have changed considerably, we have brought in more money through taxation than we have ever done before. Or at least, we're right up there. And that unless we opt out of this program, we will be putting in more than we're receiving from the state. Is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, correct. On the supplemental material I provided, you can see, we really started to spike in March of 2021, which is based on sales from two months prior. So right about the time when things started opening up, our sales tax has boomed. A lot of that is due to the online sales. The Wayfair decision, as I mentioned in the background material, was... Became effective in 2018. It was not obviously implemented right away on day one. So I believe it was implemented at the end of 2019, which is kind of when you started seeing the spike in sales. I do not expect that anything's going to change in the next year.
It's my understanding that one of the reasons for the impact on our money's received is because the law changed and we are now receiving tax money on items sold on the Internet.
Terry will be correct. I'm sorry. I apologize. I forget that I've been dealing with this. The Wayfair decision is exactly that decision. It was the state of Kansas versus Wayfair and caused them to distribute sales tax on online sales... Well, all online sales are now distributed to local jurisdictions as... Based on where the orders are placed.
Thank you.
Mr. Turkinian.
Ms. Willoughby, it's my understanding that we're not opting out. We don't have an option to opt out. It's a waiver. And the waiver would only be good for one year. And really, from what you're telling us, the waiver wouldn't do as... It would be more harmful than effective because we're generating more income, correct?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, at this point, I do want to caution the board, and taxation has been reminding me of that very much this week, that this is... You cannot go back to being a guaranteed county at this point unless the law was changed. So this is a one-time decision to go forward. We would be... We would need to ensure that residents understand that it is important to buy local and to make sure that the sales tax stays in our county if we choose to not become a guaranteed county.
That was my question. It is not our choice. We can ask for a one-year waiver according to the documents you provided here.
Well, I'll be... I have a couple of questions. So you're indicating, and I think you did this, but you're indicating that by us not being a receiving county, we actually gain by 1.6 million dollars? Is that what you basically said? And you don't see that item receding at all in the next years? So us not asking for a waiver would actually enhance our county by, as I see it, about 1.6 million reasons?
Terry Willoughby, that's correct. I'm just passing along that it is a one-time only decision and that historically, as I provided the data, we weren't always in this situation. But being cautious, I want to let everyone know that.
Okay. So we pass this opportunity. If we ask for the waiver, then we would not get... We would not benefit from those 1.6 million reasons. Okay. So anyways, this is not a... So what is the feeling of the board? I'm not inclined... Okay, Mr. Kates or... Oh, Mr. Ritchie has a question.
Chairman, thank you. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, this is for presentation only. Staff is moving forward with not requesting exemption. This is merely a presentation to the staff and to the public. Members of the commission can ask questions. They can share their private views, but this is not a collective action or a collective deliberation by the board. If the board is so inclined to do that, they can direct staff to bring this forward at the next meeting for possible action and properly agendize it. But currently, it's not agendized for the board to deliberate collectively or to direct staff. Staff is merely providing information and letting you know what staff intends to do.
Okay. Well, I personally thank you, Mr. Ritchie, for that clarification. I personally don't... I think staff is taking the correct directions. But anyways, okay. Then no action by us. So anyways, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And we appreciate you keeping your pulse on... Fingers on the pulse of what's going on financially in our county.
Thank you.
Doing a very good job. Thank you. Okay. Then, item number three, for possible action to discussion on the adoption of Resolution 2022-R-031, updating the panel of persons appropriate to serve as Justice of the Peace Pro Tem pursuant to NRS 4-032. And Mr. Kates is presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is an update to the pro tem list for people to sit in for the justices of the peace in the East Fork and Tahoe townships. This list was compiled in consultation with the justices of both of the courts as well as the DA's office. I do want to note that in your original packet, there was one heir, Joan Newfer, was listed as the Tahoe... Is listed under Tahoe Justice Court, but she should have been listed under East Fork. And that was sent out as supplemental material. So that's corrected in the supplemental packet. Happy to...
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Kates? This is for possible action. We'll take it to the public for public comment. Is there any public comment here in chambers in this regard? Seeing no public comment, I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. So it's a good indication, right? So we'll go to online. Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson, for the record, at this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the board. Any comments? Possible action? Motion? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2022-R-031, updating the panel of justices for the peace... Justice of the Peace Pro Tem for East Fork and Tahoe Justice Courts is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles for the adoption of Resolution 2022-R-031, updating the panel of persons appropriate to serve as justices of the peace pro tem pursuant to NRS 4-... Or 4.032. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Item number four. I hope Ms. Willoughby didn't leave too far away. Presentation only, introduction of ordinance 2022-1598, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nevada, designated by the short title, 2022 Community Center Refunding Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of the Douglas County, Nevada, general obligation limited tax community center refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues Series 2022 in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $7 million, providing for the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and covenants relating to the payment of said bonds and providing the effective date thereof. This is the first reading. We have CFO Terry Willoughby and Deputy DA Zach Watley presenting.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby. Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. Again, we are bringing your refunding for the... Some debt to save money. This is the two... The refunding the 2012 community center bonds. The interest rate, as noted in the background, was they were issued at 3%. We learned this morning, we're looking for an interest rate of about 2.05%. So estimated $337,000 in savings over the remaining term. And again, it's for presentation only. This does start on packet page 371.
Ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Watley. Did you have anything to add to that? Okay. Mr.?
When is the bonds supposed to be paid up currently? And I know that this free financing would be 10 years from now. Is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, 2033. And we are not extending the term. We are just getting a lower interest rate.
Okay. Any additional questions by the commissioners? Please, Mr. Ingles.
Whose bond is this? The state?
Terry Willoughby, this is the bonds that were issued by the county to... For the construction of the community center.
Boy, that's a good rate.
It's out for bid right now. And it will be a bank placement rather than bonds. And it will be... Currently, the debt is structured at an escalated payment rate. We're looking for a flat rate per year because it's easier for forecasting. And it doesn't make any difference in the cost.
Any additional questions? Well, as I see it, on the last presentation item, you gave us 1.6 million reasons, and this is another 337,000 reasons. So I once again appreciate your diligence in bringing this forward and going forward with this. So I take it at the next meeting, we'll have the opportunity to give you the hands up on that. So thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number five, for possible action, discussion to adopt ordinance 2022-1594, an ordinance amending Douglas County Code, Chapter 10.12, by adding Section 10.12.1... Or Point 090. I'll repeat that for the record. Section 10.12.090 to establish regulations for parking within the Town of Genoa. This is the second reading, so it's up for action. And I believe we have Mr. Bruback, Town Manager from Town of Genoa, here to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. This is, as you noted, the second reading. It's pretty straightforward. This will be the first parking ordinance for Genoa. When I first took over in my first month, I had all the residents on Mill Street that came to tell me about the issues, the fire issues that were on... Well, the fire hazard that was on Mill Street because of the limited parking... Well, the limited space that was available with all the parkings that kind of cram into that area from Genoa Bar. I have spoken with Mr. Willie Webb from the bar, and he's okay with this. I have discussed this issue also with Mr. Coverly. I wish he was here. And I quote him. He said, "The additional parking is great and definitely needed. Sounds like you've thought of everything. And I can support the town on this ordinance." He was referencing how I'm working currently with Lisa Lekemberry to secure her lot for an additional 20 parking spaces. And so that's currently in the works with Sam Booth, trying to get that lot reparsled so that we can utilize that and get people off of Mill Street. Also, this ordinance would be no parking on Junction Alley, and Mill Street would become resident only. Each resident would get an initial two free parking passes for that. And if they needed an additional parking pass, it would be an additional... It would be an additional fee. But it's pretty straightforward, and I think it's going to make a big issue here in Genoa.
Thank you. Comments or questions by the board? Mr. Rice?
Knowing that this was coming up, last Sunday, I took a drive and I looked at Mill Street. I couldn't get a fire engine up that street if I had to. If I had a crane, it was parked solid. I understand the problem. And hopefully, this will resolve some of it, especially with the addition of the other parking spaces. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioners? Seeing nothing else from the commissioners at this time, I take it to... This is for possible action, so we'll go out to the public for chambers for public comment. Is there anybody in chambers who wishes to offer public comment on this? Seeing no or sensing no, we'll go to online. Ms. Johnson, is there anybody online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson, for the record, at this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board. Seeing no other comments, entertain a motion. Sensing no other comments, entertain a motion. Oh, okay, Mr. Ingalls?
Can I ask you a personal question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in the Record Courier, you got into a taffy pull out there with somebody.
Mr. Ingalls, this is not pursuant to this particular motion, so I'm sorry, I can't, I can't, we can't entertain that. So, thank you. I appreciate your, your concerns, but...
I'll ask him later.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance 2022-1594, an ordinance amending Douglas County Code, Chapter 10.12, by adding Section 10.12.090, to establish regulations for parking within the Town of Genoa as presented.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, to adopt ordinance 2022-1594, an ordinance amending Douglas County Code, Chapter 10.12, by adding Section 10.12.090, to establish regulations for parking within the Town of Genoa. Sensing no further comments by the board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Brubaker.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. Okay, so anyways, we have had a request for personal privilege here, so based on that, we will take it, let's, let's take a, can we get this accomplished in 10 minutes? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 20 to noon, okay, or 11:40, whichever comes sooner.
Recording stopped.
Okay, the timeout is over. It's 11:40. I call the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for March 3 back to order. So item number six for possible action, it appears to me, or it's my thought, that this item may take longer than the 20 minutes leading up till noon. If it does, we will go ahead and finish off this item through, through the noon hour, and then take a, a noon break, or a lunch break at that time. So anyways, based on that, for possible action, discussion on the adoption of ordinance 2022-1593, an ordinance amending provisions of Douglas County Code, Title 20, Appendix B, National Electric Code revisions, specifically changes to Article 80.27, the inspector's qualifications in order to correct and ensure internal consistency with the definition of electrical inspector and Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 278, regarding inspector qualifications. This is the second reading. It's for action today, and is being presented by Tim Davis. It looks like he's being joined by Deputy DA Cynthia Gregory and Community Development Director Tom Delaire. So I don't know who's going first here, but who's on first and what's on second now? Okay, Mr. Delaire.
Thank you, Chairman Gardner. Tom Delaire for the record, Community Development Director. Yes, this item is a follow-up. We had to the, to the first reading that you heard, and on February, I believe it was 3rd, along with the February 3 meeting, you guys approved the qualifications for the inspector, or for the building official, which also included his employees or deputies, is what they called it in the, in that ordinance, and/or our subcontractors. So all, all of those individuals, based on your resolution that was approved on February 3, need to be certified as a building inspector. There's a lot of certifications to be a building inspector for commercial, and what this particular topic deals with is the electrical code, and, and we do have two inspectors that are certified on our team today. One of them is, I'm not going to say his name, residential electrical as well, that is on our team and that is doing inspections today. We have, this item is just really to clean up our current code in Appendix B of our county code, and, which deals specifically with the electrical inspections and with what the ordinance, or the resolution that you guys adopted on February 3. There are two changes that are highlighted on your packet page 443 of the ordinance. The first one is in Article 80.27, and the second, under Certification A, and then the second item is under Section, or B, which is the next item below the A, and it's the experience. And we added the verbiage in there for, for the building official or building official deputies who meet the requirements as set forth per, or by the county, per Nevada Revised Statutes 278-577, which basically refers to the resolution you guys approved on February 3. So it's a big circle. I know it's confusing, so I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add, Cynthia, to this, or Tim?
Mr. Chairman?
I don't think we're ready to go to questions by the commission yet. I think Cynthia, Ms. Cynthia Gregory has items to add.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, because it is somewhat confusing, um...
Is your microphone on?
Yes. Let's see, did I do this correctly, Marsha? Did I share a screen? No?
Okay, and then I'll select this one, and then do share. Perfect, and I'll make this speak over here.
Okay, here we go. Sorry for that technical difficulty. So just to bring some clarification, because it is a little bit confusing, just even in reading the backup. So this is a cleanup, and it's correcting an internal inconsistency within the existing code. So staff was asked to look at this with regards to the resolution. In the process of looking at that resolution, it also came to the forefront that there was an internal inconsistency within the code, and that needed to be cleaned up. And that inconsistency has existed since 2005. So because of that, bringing forward the resolution, this was discovered, and that's a good thing, because from a legal perspective, if you have an internal inconsistency in your code, that creates legal liability. Plus, it's not user-friendly. People look at one section, and it says X, they look at another section, and it says Y. So the other thing is to clarify that this ordinance is not changing the certification and education requirements. Those were set previously via the job descriptions, and now, then, in February, they were set via your resolution, which was done pursuant to 278-577. And that goes into point number three, that you set the qualifications, and those were done. So, let's just talk in general, because it is really confusing when you talk about the codes and the building code. So Douglas County Code 2800 basically says that the Board adopts the following nationally-recognized codes. Talks about residential code, commercial code, then you get down to number five, and that's the National Electrical Code. What's important is that it says, except for the portions deleted, modified, or amended by Appendix B. So you adopt the national code, and then, as this Board... So, you adopt the national code, and then, as this board, within its authority, you can amend certain sections. Because if you didn't, this is just one code, and you adopt about 10 codes, plumbing, residential. So, the code, if you incorporated all of it, would be not just two binders, it would probably be six binders. So, what we're amending, or what is in front of you today, is an amendment to Appendix B. Specifically, in 2005, I just want to point out the internal inconsistency. So, in 2005, what the National Electrical Code said was, an individual meeting the requirements of 80.27. Now, 80.27 is what is being amended today, but this is the section that creates the internal inconsistency. Back in 2005 and subsequently, which it's been, National Electrical Code has probably been amended, updated every, what, two to three years? Right. So, in 2005, what they did was, they amended the National Electrical Code via Appendix B to say, an electrical inspector is an individual, and they deleted, meeting the requirements of 80.27, and included, authorized perform electrical inspections by the building official. That is how the code reads today, and that's how it has read since 2005. Now, the issue becomes, is that in 2005, and I put up again, showing the amendment, is it left in the requirements of Article 80.27. So, they took him out of 80.2, but then forgot that there was the referencing code, which is 80.27. So, you'll see right here is where the inconsistency begins. So, it was amended to say, an individual authorized to perform electrical inspections by the building official, but then you go to 80, and they deleted the reference to 80.27, but then you go to 80.27, and it basically has that language back in there. Shall be certified by a nationally-recognized inspector certification program. So, this is the proposal to correct it today, is to get rid of that internal inconsistency, and make it consistent with NRS, which says the board sets the certifications. So, the language in yellow is the new language that is being proposed. There's no language that is being removed, there's only additional language that's being added. So, what it will read is that an electrical inspector, except for the authority having jurisdiction as the building official or deputies authorized, shall be certified, and that's okay, because if you recall last time during the conversation with regards to the resolution, the building official explained that sometimes the builders, they have them, right, contract to have the electrical inspectors, or there's a third party that the county contracts to do with the, to do those inspections, if it's beyond the capabilities. And then again, here at the end, you add, "or", the building official, building officials deputies who meet the requirements set forth by the county per Nevada Revised Statutes 278-577. So, I know last time there was an issue raised by the public, specifically talking about NRS 278-583, and talking about the electrical code, and saying you had to adopt it. Well, there is a statute that says you have to review it and see if it's applicable to your county. Well, obviously, this county has. But then it goes on to state that you can adopt such modifications. And that's exactly what this board has done since 2005, and what we're asking you to do today. So, that's the end of my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Davis, or Mr. Delaire is as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. I believe Mr. Noasad had a question.
I do, it's more of a statement. Let me get closer to the mic here, my voice has gone away. I spoke earlier with Ms. Gregory about the complexity of what they had to go through to get this done. And I equated it to my father-in-law, who was a codebreaker against the Japanese Navy, and I put them on equal par. But anyway, I have some very, very simple questions. In referring to Section B, the first, item one, demonstrated knowledge, good phrase. Item two, be well-versed. How do I know someone is well-versed? Is there an examination, is it like qualifying, or getting certified in certain areas? I think well-versed is too vague.
So, just for clarifications, Commissioner Noasad, Section B is not actually being amended by this by this code, or this proposal. I'm trying to go back here. If you take a look at page 444 in your packet, if you take a look, it's Section A that's being amended, Section B is not. But I think that Mr. Davis can answer your question.
So, the language that they're asking us to adopt, Ms. Gregory, is the language that's either underlined in italics, is that correct?
It's in Section A, correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
For the record, Tim Davis, Douglas County Building Official. I'd like to thank the commissioners for the opportunity today. Commissioner Noasad, I think that as the building official, to define, be well-versed, would be through on-the-job training, additional training, online training. There's several, there are several agencies that we use to provide online training, not only to gain experience and knowledge, but to also gain continuing education requirements that you gentlemen set last month, for my deputies and myself. And so, well-versed, I think, comes down to any manager, not just the building official, but any manager in Douglas County, who has to evaluate his staff and determine which ones are best suited with the most knowledge and with the most experience for each level of electrical inspection.
And I would assume that as part of what we did last month, we defined those things that the manager is going to do, correct?
Correct, sir. To go further, this is just a tool in the proverbial toolbox for the building official to utilize inspections as training devices for individuals who need experience and knowledge. Not only, not every commercial electrical inspection is complicated, and when they are, the building official has several tools at his disposal. We talked about that last month, being, you know, Chapter 1704 of the International Building Code, where you can add, ask for special inspection agreements, structural observations, use third-party contracts, which we have.
One more thing. I have a two-volume Title 20 on my desk, and I cannot find Appendix B in there.
For the record, Tim Davis, I'd be happy to show it to you, I know exactly where it's at.
Very good, I'll take you up on it.
Okay, Mr. Tarkanian, you had questions?
Yeah. Why wouldn't we want our electrical inspectors to be certified?
Tim Davis for the record, Commissioner Tarkanian, thanks for the question. I think that's the goal, I think the goal is to recruit electrical inspectors. However, the legislation and code developers in the past realize that rural communities don't necessarily have the means to recruit somebody with that kind of electrical background. And then those that do, they're paid relatively well because of that educational background. And so, our resources kind of handcuff us a little bit in that department. We would love nothing more to talk about recruitment and retention with building inspectors.
Okay, now I got a real serious question.
Okay.
You're telling me that we're going to relax the inspection standards by having someone who's not quite as qualified as a cer, let me finish for a second. As a certified inspector, because of the cost, where we could add that cost on to the building permits and cover that?
For the record, Tim Davis, thank you again. Maybe I missed, you misunderstood, maybe I didn't explain it correctly. That's not the case, we do have electrical inspectors. I am currently certified in all electrical inspections, and we have a third-party team as well, who provides us with an electrical inspector. And we utilize those when we need to. Not every, not every electrical inspection is complicated in that manner. We would utilize the two individuals, myself and our third-party electrical inspector, as training for our individuals who need knowledge and experience as well. So, I don't think we're lessening the code, I think we're utilizing the code as the legislation allowed us, and code developers gave us the opportunity to.
Well, I understand the legislation may require a certain minimum standard, and the question is whether Douglas County wants to have the minimal standard, or something that maybe is a little bit protective. And I would think that the electrical inspection is about as important as anything you can do in building the safety of, whether it's commercial or residential. And I understand the fact that it's more expensive, and I do, and I could also understand the fact that it's hard to find people, enough qualified people to stay up with the work that's here. But there's other alternatives, you can contract it out to a third party, you can run that cost through to the building permits. I got an email from somebody, first of all, I met with somebody who had concerns about this, and they explained their concerns, and it made a lot of sense to me, and then I had an email just yesterday from a barber, Flanagan, that said that one of her friends left her car running in a garage in Chichester Estates and almost died because inspector did not notice that the firewall between the garage and the house was not complete. And I understand there may be other circumstances that she's not aware of, but it seems one example of this, if this occurred, would warrant the need to have more qualified, not by more qualified, I'm talking about certified inspectors, to make sure these things don't happen ever.
Tim Davis for the record, thank you again, Commissioner Tarkanian. I certainly understand that life safety is the most critical thing we're talking about here today. A firewall has nothing to do with an electrical inspection, however, it's very serious, and it needs to be a part of the fire envelope, which protects people who live in habitable spaces. And so, whatever challenge that that individual had, I can't tell you if it was insufficient at the time of a final inspection. It's too vague, I don't have an address, I don't have a permit number, but I can tell you, department-wide, community development, code enforcement, building, life safety is the number-one reason why we exist.
Sure, and again, I'm just surprising you with an email, and you wouldn't know those things, but my concern, it just goes back to the general standard. With electrical building, the building with electrical components, it's going to be one of the most important things to make sure is done correctly for the safety and welfare of the people that are utilized in that building, home or resident or commercial. Why wouldn't we have a certified inspectors? Why wouldn't we require that? See, the language, and this wasn't in our package, which, again, if all this stuff was important, it should be in our package, so we would understand this. I read through the package, it was very minimal. But the language that you're excluding from B52 is that the inspector has to be certified. Let me just get the language. You're taking out, meeting the requirements 80.27, 80.27 is that they're certified. Why wouldn't we want that and require that if it's, I mean, under any circumstances, even if it's very difficult and more expensive?
Sure, Commissioner Tarkanian, just for clarification, we did call this out on page 441 of the packet, and specifically, the language that you're referencing is not what we're changing. That was changed by this board in 2005.
And I do appreciate that, but that doesn't make us have to follow it today, if we don't think it's right today.
That's correct, but that resolution came in front of you back in February.
Okay.
And in February, that's not the standard you adopted. And so, if you wanted to, you would have to completely change the resolution, as well as we would have to come back for this ordinance. And I think back in February, it was, we had a lengthy conversation about how even residential and commercials, they have the four aspects, and one of those aspects does include electrical. And my understanding is that for this National Electrical Code, it's for different types of projects other than those.
Okay, so, but we're trying to clarify language, so that it all works out, and part of that language is eliminating the requirement of a certified nationally-recognized inspector. So, that's what you're, yes, it is, that's 80.27 from what you put up there. Certification, all electrical inspectors shall be certified by a nationally-recognized inspector certification program. So, you want us to eliminate that language?
No, that was already, if you're referring, I have a different one up here, electrical inspector, that was deleted in 2005.
I'm reading what you just put up on the board, and let me just finish, okay? I'll be the first to admit that maybe I didn't know everything, or understand everything on my first full month on the board in February, and didn't quite understand what you were saying, particularly if it wasn't clarified to us from what we're seeing today. But that doesn't hold us bound by wanting to do something better, or be more safe and protective of the community. And I'm just trying to get back to this, maybe we can't do it in today's meeting, because it's not part of the agenda, but you want us to change the language that would eliminate a nationally-recognized inspector. And I'm just wondering why we would accept that, why would you want to do that? I still haven't heard the reasoning why, except that it's more expensive and it's harder to find certified inspectors here in Douglas County.
Tim Davis for the record, I think I need to clarify that we do have certified electrical inspectors on staff, and we do have a third-party electrical inspector that's provided to us if we should need that individual. The thing that I think where I'm missing my explanation-
Hold on one second, though, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off, but it's sort of a little misleading when you say you have them on staff. You do have some, but you don't require them of all, is that correct?
I don't think it would be financially feasible to have everyone be electrically certified, given the rate of salary that they demand in the market. I just don't think we have the budget for that. And I think that because we are a rural community with less than 100,000, which NRS allows us to utilize that code, that it's probably more prudent. Doesn't mean that we don't have the responsibility for life safety at all electrical applications, it just means we don't have the resources to compete with other jurisdictions, surrounding jurisdictions, that we lose certified inspectors to.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Ritchie had something to add in on this.
Yes, thank you Chairman, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Just to be clear, this agenda item is about clearing up some code revisions. The board pursuant to resolution could set those standards. For instance, you could go back and further amend the resolution to clarify what expectations you have for different types of inspectors. You could, for instance, say, if someone is going to perform an electrical inspection, they need to have this specific certification, or whatever the standard is. This pursuant to NRS, the board has the authority to set these standards. The code can go through and specify what your expectations are as far as certification and ongoing training for any level of inspection. I think what the building official is saying is, it's impractical to require every inspector to have, for instance, an electrical inspection, if they may not be doing that inspection, or it's like have, what you could be arguing is that every inspector in Douglas County has to be like a building official, have all the required certifications, when that may not be practical. It's like having somebody that's a specialist check your nose, you know, nose throat.
I didn't, we're not saying that every inspector would have to be certified for electrical, but ones that are doing electrical inspections should be certified to do those. But again, I want to get back to what this motion is about, so maybe I'm misunderstanding, but my understanding is, we're being asked to eliminate the language under 80.2 that says, electrical inspectors and individual authorized, and we're going to eliminate the language meeting the requirements of 80.27. the language meeting the requirements of 80.27. And then you go down to 80.27, and the language they want to eliminate shall be certified by a nationally-recognized inspector certification program. Is that correct?
No.
No. So as I see it, and maybe I'm wrong. The only language that we are trying to amend today is that language that is underlined and italicized. Is that—regardless—is that right?
Yes. In your packet on the ordinance, it's underlined and italicized. What is up on your screen is that language that's in yellow.
In yellow, right.
Correct. That language that—with regards to 80.2, that language was changed back in 2005. That's the time that amendment happened. So regardless if you change the standards or not via resolution, you would— Appendix B, which you would— That ending sentence or the building official—building official deputies who meet the requirements set forth by the county per Nevada Revised Statutes 278, 577. You would still need that clarifying language. You could still come back because that's the statute that allows you to set the standards. So regardless, there is still an internal inconsistency if you want to change that resolution.
Go ahead.
The language that is italicized is "except for the authority having jurisdiction as a building official or others authorized by the building official." You're asking us to add that. Without that, it says "all electrical inspectors shall be certified." So we're now making an exception for with this language.
Yes, you referenced Article 80.2, and I'm happy to put that up again.
Okay.
So you will see in 2005, the language that's crossed through said "meeting the requirement of 80.27." And it got rid of, effectively in 2005, that requirement to be certified. So we are internally making it consistent today and still allowing you to set the standards by resolution.
Okay. Under—on page 443, last paragraph under certification, you're at—you want—I'm I missing something, but the italicized language that you want us to vote on, is that correct? We're going to vote on this italicized language?
Correct.
Okay. Without that language, it says "all electrical inspectors shall be certified by a nationally-recognized inspector." So we're making an exception out of it. Now, you can say it was done in 2005. We're trying to clarify it, but then we're sort of ratifying it right now by adding that language.
Well, I—I will—I mean, you can categorize it as that. I mean, I—it's been since 2005, as well as your passage of the resolution. So we're actually confirming what this board has done, as well as making it consistent with your vote earlier in the month.
Commissioners, Mr. Ingles.
Okay. I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this. You're crawling around in this stuff all the time, and it's pretty convoluted. Commissioner Tarkanian's having a hard time going from point A to point B. Bottom line, in Douglas County, an electrical inspector, what are the requirements?
Tim Davis, for the record. Commissioner Ingles, thank you for the question. Douglas County doesn't set the certification requirements. The ICC is the certifying agency.
Stop right there. We did an audit on generator installations, being done by somebody in your department who was not certified, and it said that he was working under your jurisdiction, hence it was okay because you were watching what he was doing. And all of those installations and all of those listings were deficient. Now, what we want to do in regard to having an electrical inspector, we want to have an electrical inspector who is certified to sign off on electrical inspections, minimal residential—I know there's commercial and different things. And not working under your jurisdiction or anybody else. He can work independently because he is certified. What is that going to take?
Tim Davis, for the record. Commissioner Ingles, it currently exists. We are talking about the NEC today. What you're referencing is the International Residential Code.
Do we have any inspectors working in Douglas County in your department, electrical, who are certified?
We do.
You mentioned—okay. You mentioned deputies. What is that?
Deputy is a term that the code uses for inspectors, plan reviewers, and permit technicians. Anybody assigned under the building official is considered a deputy. It's the code language. It's not our language.
Okay. They're certified, correct?
Correct.
You talk about OJT. Now, if you get an electrical inspector who's experienced or has passed all these certifications, they should require a minimal amount of OJT, or maybe they come from somewhere else where they've got experience and they're ready to go into the field. Is that correct?
Tim Davis, for the record. I'm kind of a little lost on that because you're talking about—you're talking about certification requirements that we looked at last month, that we could have addressed or we—maybe we sit down and address going forward. But currently, we have individuals that are certified and that have been working with us for eight years, five years, three years. It's quite a lot of on-the-job training already existing. And then we do currently have a inspector who's listed as a trainee going through on-the-job training as we speak, as well as entry-level job—on-the-job training that was conducted previously.
Okay, let's stop there. This individual who's on OJT is not certified, is that correct?
Tim Davis, for the record. Once again, last month, we passed the resolution—
No, not last month. This guy, whoever it is, is—or is not certified.
Not required to be certified until the first year of his employment is over.
Currently, he is not certified. Is that—yes or no?
That is correct.
Thank you. Who monitors this individual?
He falls under the jurisdiction of the building official. He's his deputy.
That would be you?
Yes, sir.
So you sign off on the electrical based on his approval? Or you both sign off on it? Or he has jurisdiction to go out there and just sign off on it himself?
He's given on-the-job training in the procedures manual, and when we feel that he is deemed qualified to conduct inspections, he can do so and approve or deny going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Mr. Noah Head, you had questions?
We've been through this before. OJT, great, great program. I got somebody comes in, working—was going to be working for me and doing some inspections. And you say, "Okay, go out to that parcel out there and do an electrical inspection on the main fuse box." Is anybody going with him?
Tim Davis, for the record. Thanks for the question. It's pretty vague. The example that you're giving me, it would be up to the building official to determine which inspector is qualified and experienced enough to conduct the inspection.
Okay. Let me rephrase it then. I got a brand-new guy in now who says, "Gee, I'd like to be an electrical inspector." So he's going to go through some on-the-job training. Is there any milestones along the path of that OJT to which he can take a test and be certified?
Tim Davis, for the record. There's no current certifying agency except for the ICC, at which point you would—you would take the residential electrical test, or you would take the commercial electrical test, or you could take the residential building inspector's test, which is an all-encompassing structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, overall certification.
Okay. And then you, as the manager, would set what those milestones are prior to his appealing to the authority, if you will, to take the test.
Currently, the testing requirements are when an individual studies, we provide the practice exam. He pays for his own certification test. He takes the test, pass or fail. If he passes, we reimburse the testing fee. And when the individual is comfortable with his practice exams, and he has the experience that he feels he needs to take the test, then he takes the test.
Once again, milestones. There are things that we have to take a trainee through, step by step. Each building—each successful completion of a step builds onto the next one and the next one till you achieve excellence. That's what I'm asking, is that—you keep referring back to the authority, which is the ICC or whatever it was, and it sounds like what you're training them to do is—you're not—you're not—you're not mothering them along, which I think is what you should be doing on OJT. That's a personal preference now.
Thank you. Mr. Rice.
Is there a standardized test that a person doing electrical—about to do electrical inspections must pass in order to be able to do the electrical inspection?
Currently, our training program would be to—to guide the training inspector with each individual inspector so that he learns different areas, different types of inspections, electrical inspections, all inspections, inspection styles. And when we feel comfortable that the individual has gained the knowledge and knows how to use the procedures manual and find code questions in the code, then we usher them along to their next step, which would be to take on entry-level inspections, and then they graduate. Kind of like what we're explaining is that it's kind of like a milestone situation. Doesn't exist in writing. Maybe that needs to happen, and maybe we need to have that discussion, and I'm all for it. But we do have a very in-depth procedures manual that gives you a step-by-step instruction on how to conduct every inspection we do, to include common errors that you may find on the job.
So my question was, is there a standardized test that a person has to pass to become an electrical inspector?
Correct. It is given—it's under the IRC, under residential electrical and residential building certification.
Thank you.
So I wanted to ask a question in that regard, and then I know Mr. Kates has some questions and Mr. Tarkanian does. Mr. Davis, is there a time requirement once we hire somebody to actually take that test during our employment?
The trainee is given a one-year period to obtain an ICC certification. We recommend it be the residential building code because it is for disciplines, the electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and structural. So he becomes well-rounded and versed in residential inspections.
Should that person not pass that test after one year, what happens to their employment?
That would have to be reviewed to be terminated if they didn't meet the term of the agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Kates, you had a question or a comment? Okay. Then I'll go over to Mr. Tarkanian, who had another question.
Yeah, well, it's just a follow-up to what you said. That's a good question because that was what I was trying to get to. So you have some people that are working underneath other certified electrical inspectors. They go through a process. By the end of one year, they have to pass the certification test? Is that what you're saying?
They're hired under the agreement that they have to obtain a certification within one-year period. Correct.
And we exhausted the questions up here. Okay. So anyways, at this time then, this is for action. So I will go to the public and offer opportunities for public comment here to members of the—here in chambers. I would remind members of the public that we do limit public comment to three minutes. We have a timing light system, and so we would ask you to keep your comments within three minutes so that all individuals wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. And then after we exhaust the public comments here in chambers, we will go to online comments, should there be any. So please state your name for the record and sign in. And once again, please, when you see the yellow light, please start to wrap up your comments. When you see the red light, please conclude your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. Valerie Nunes for the record. I was employed by the Douglas County Building Division for 21 and 1/2 years. I was an International Code Council Certified Residential and Commercial Plans Examiner, as well as a residential and commercial building inspector. I was employed in the building department when the former building official wrote this original ordinance to ensure the competence and certification of anyone performing electrical inspections. The recently-retired building official was a licensed Nevada residential and small commercial contractor for many years. When he wanted to be a building inspector here, he was told of the requirement to be fully certified in both residential and commercial inspections, including plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and combination inspector. He spent two years attending Butte College to obtain all of these certifications. That isn't the case now, at all. The longest-tenured inspector has been here for seven years and still only has his residential building inspector certification. Another inspector is fully certified in residential inspections, and another does not even have one certification, while another is a certified residential mechanical inspector only. Clearly, the county does not have a training program, and adherence to previous job description requirements was not a priority. Hence, the relaxation of requirements was the easiest route to take. Since I retired, the county has not had a certified commercial plans examiner. Again, no initiative to obtain a necessary certification. Are plans being approved by an uncertified individual or by an outside agency? The building department previously required for a backup generator, a photovoltaic system, the approval by the regulatory fire agency. East Fork or Tahoe-Douglas would note on the plans the requirement for signage for an alternate power system and appropriate disconnecting means. At Jobbs Peak Ranch in Tahoe, there are several underground propane tanks that are buried. Again, that required fire department approval. Open communication between the two entities, as it was previously, no longer exists. The building codes are not the end-all, but the minimum requirement. Why are we allowing building inspectors not to be certified in the minimum codes? Why don't we have a certified commercial plans examiner? Lastly, I'm waiting a response from ICC regarding us not having certified inspectors. For the safety of all persons in Douglas County, I am requesting this ordinance be denied or at a minimum continued until a response from the International Code Council is obtained regarding building inspectors working under someone else's certifications. I thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Taylor. For the record, I'm a retired fire captain and investigator for the East Fork Fire Protection District. I served you all for 20 and 1/2 years as a career fire officer. I'm an ICC-certified fire inspector I and II, as well as an ICC-certified building plans examiner. Prior to my service here, I worked as a supervising investigator for the State Insurance Commissioner, and I spent seven years for a large multinational insurance company as a special agent for its investigations bureau, investigating basically would be fires, explosions, and other things that affected commercial and residential— that affected commercial and residential buildings. I'm here today to ask you to vote down item six, the ordinance that would allow Douglas County Building Department to employ a non-ICC NFPA certified electrical inspector under the certifications of the current and future building officials. For 21 years approximately, I worked hand-in-hand with Douglas County Community Development, their building inspectors, and their building officials, there are three or four of them during my tenure. I described my experience as very cooperative, mutually informative, regarding projects underway and items of regulatory importance that could pop up in the field. I found that those folks working at the building department were generally very responsive and very knowledgeable. From time to time, building inspectors and officials would find things that I had, that had changed on projects that could affect international fire code requirements. They'd let me know. I would also find items that fell under the building code. I took notes, followed up with inspectors, advising them of my observations. In other words, a cooperative relationship promoting the public safety. The goal was always to protect the consumer of the contractor's services, protect the employee in public safety, and protect our firefighters and sheriff's officers from harm if they respond to an event occurring at a building job site or an occupied commercial building or dwelling. For the record, the sheriffs usually beat us there. Based on my recent inquiries into an electrical supply condition of a building at 1231 Service Drive, units A and B, and the initial appearance of electrical equipment installed at this site, it appears clear to me that there is a dangerous deterioration of this relationship. The building official and the fire marshals are, should be joined in the sense of working together. My examination of the equipment at this location, I believe this equipment is not approved for exterior use, and basically it looks home-built to me. Ironically, the building official for Douglas County signed it off. There is also a current ongoing disagreement as to whether the fire districts and the state fire marshal have jurisdiction over residential construction. It's clear we have activity that directly impacts home construction, and basically I think perhaps we need to make some changes in our local codes. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Adam Wenhold. I'm representing the president of our Eastwork Professional Firefighters, Kevin May, and will be reading a letter that he has submitted for the record. Douglas County Commissioners, my name is Kevin May. I am the president of Eastwork Professional Firefighters, Local 726. I am writing you today out of great concern for the safety of my fellow first responders and citizens of Douglas County. The members of Local 3726 protects approximately 700 square miles of Douglas County with 80 active full-time members responding to just shy of 7,000 calls of service per year. This ordinance has the potential to, but this ordinance and potential change to the Douglas County Code was brought to our attention by concerned citizens of the community, as well as retired and active fire service members. One of those concerned is over 30 years of experience in building code fire prevention and investigation, so I would say he knows what he is talking about. I mentioned the above statistics to help point, paint a picture, that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. When we respond to a call for a structure fire, gas leak, car into the building, et cetera, one of our top priorities in an emergency like this is to secure the utilities. This is so that if one of our members comes into a contact with electrical material, nothing bad happens, no shocks occur. Let's see. If, if our members come into contact with an improperly installed electrical panel or subsystems, such as a generator or solar panels, the system itself could remain energized and potentially become the cause of a greater emergency or worse, causing a fatal accident to the, a fatal shock to a first responder or a citizen. I find this concern to be significant, and it is appalling that we are even here to have this discussion, especially when it is 100% preventable. However, I do not, I do understand that the county is facing hiring difficulties along with the rest of the state and nation. Finding qualified workforce applicants is a challenge we are all facing today. Many organizations, both private and in government, have had lower standards temporarily to fill the needs and required positions. I understand why that happens, and in some cases, it's acceptable. This is not one of those cases, to the extent that there should, that there would be no expectation requiring the employee doing the electrical inspection to obtain professional certifications in a timely manner. If an unaware, untrained, or uncertified individual is approving these inspections, serious injury, property damage, and loss of life will occur eventually. The Douglas County Building Department, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, assume great responsibility and liability by allowing this to occur and passing this ordinance. I urge you to please make it clear to everyone that you are not okay with a subpart ordinance, please strike down this request to the building department and require that only qualified individuals perform and sign off any electrical inspections. If there is a need to hire someone without these certifications, there must be a requirement for them to get qualified in a timely manner, so that they should not be performing or approving any electrical inspections until certified. The building and fire codes are in place to protect life and property. It should be followed, and only persons qualified and knowledgeable should be able to inspect and approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Sterrett. I'm inclined to think that we probably need electrical inspectors that are certified. However, I'm putting on my English professor's hat, actually, I'm just looking at the language that's being suggested that you approve, and I don't think that language is actually crafted grammatically correctly. So in the first insertion, that's on Article 80.27A, in the phrase being added, except for the authority having jurisdiction, there's a comma after jurisdiction, that comma should not be there, it changes the meaning and flow of the sentence, and it should be removed. And in the second insert of language, that says, or the building official, leading up to that, it says unless that person is the holder of an electrical inspector certification or the building official. So you can see how if you read that, that way, that person is holding the building official or the building official deputies. So it should be is, there should be another is put in, or is the building official or one of the building official deputies, in order for it to actually make sense grammatically. I just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Fire Marshal Eric Gavon, Division Chief for Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District. I do have a statement, a written statement, from the Tahoe Douglas Firefighters Association, the union president, that this ordinance and potential changes of Douglas County Code was brought to my attention by many fire service professionals whom I respect and value. So naturally, I began digging into this to formulate my own opinion on this matter. What I found is very appalling. Allowing an unqualified county employee to sign off on something so critical to public and firefighter safety is extremely dangerous. He goes on to say that he has some concerns about the firefighter safety as well. So he says, respectfully, IAFF Local 2441, President William Dar. My comments for, as the fire marshal for Tahoe Douglas, we are working, currently working with the county manager, the building official, and community development leads. We do have some concerns about safety. My chief asked me to come and speak with you today. We do have some concerns about electrical connections and how we sign off on those, and the involvement of the fire department going forward in the future. So our plan is to not make poop soup, but get together with a collaborative casserole. So we're gonna work with these guys so that we can have a safe environment and we can work together in this community. So as it stands currently, we do not support this, but I think given future work together, we can make something happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for the little comedy that you put into that, so.
Ted Gaines. I thank the people for coming up and making you aware of this, that I've been telling you for almost a year, year and a half, and give you the documentation and brochure showing you all this. Commissioner Turkanyan, you asked some great questions, and I appreciate that. It does say shall be certified in there. Now, they keep quoting all these codes to us. Let me go back to which it refers to us, 278-570 refers us to 278-583. Item two on it says, "Any city or county within the state may adopt such modifications of the code as to deem reasonably necessary. If such modifications do not reduce the standards established in the code." Well, when you have an uncertified inspector, you've reduced it. Period. They haven't touched on, they have one year. This has been in here for forever. It's an item 577, number two, it says, "The city and county may authorize an inspector to perform the duties pursuant to the inspections such not to get it done not less than, not more than one year." Now, some of these inspectors have been here eight and 10 years. Now, like I told you before, they got a new inspector in there now, this did nothing but demolition work. We have an inspector out teaching him how to do inspections that has no certifications. From what I'm seeing, we do have one other electrical inspector in the county. He's a residential inspector, not a commercial inspector, and he's up, I believe, inspecting our convention center. Now, Tim mentioned, they're doing this, I'm gonna leave another paper for, all these are gonna go, I'd like to put them on public comment, with my conversation with ICC, and I won't read the whole thing, but then it would be illegal for any friend to sign, or a person, to sign off on inspections. The man says yes. It would be illegal for them to use Tim's inspections. This is coming from ICC, it's got a stamp on it. Tim mentioned procedures. We got procedures. Well, I harped about this a couple of years ago, and right here, I have a copy of the, right out of the procedure book, where it says about steel in the foundation, it'll all be tied and done. This comes right out of Douglas County's procedures. Tim Davis signed it off. There was no, I got eight by 14 pictures that the steel wasn't in there, so they don't follow procedures. It's been, the building department has been ran like a dictatorship. If they don't do what he says, they don't have a job. They get pushed off. Basically, anyhow, item two is, these are gonna go for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
And thank you for your questions.
Is there any further public comment here in chambers? If not, then I would ask Ms. Johnson if there's any public comment online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. We have one person with their hand raised. Beth, do you have public comment on item number six?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
My name is Beth Heinosky. I spent 17 years in electrical manufacturing of light fixtures, and I'm rather appalled at what I'm hearing today. My comment would be that this code should be, or this, this particular vote should be to reject these code changes until the entire code is gone back and revised, so that we do have certified inspection personnel doing inspections. And if the management of the building department continues to show the lack of concern that he has shown in today's meeting, that we should be looking for another building official too. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Any additional public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for further questions and/or action. Mr. Turkanyan?
So that was really an interesting thing to watch. Two fire personnel, and ex-fire personnel, and ex-building department person, they're saying stuff that's contrary, or at least I'm understanding differently than what you guys are telling us. You guys are shaking your head like it's not true here. I just would like to figure out what's accurate or what's not, and I'd like to give you an opportunity, maybe you can explain. There's two things that caught my attention. One is, the last question I asked was, is there a time period of when they have to be certified? And then I think Commissioner Gardner said if they're not, what happens to them? Or maybe that was Wes, Mr. Rice, gotta get the Mr. down. But then some of the people speaking today said that there is no time for certification. In fact, somebody said that someone's been there for years and not certified. So that's the first thing. I'd like to get your answer on. The second one is, I understand you have a program where you're working with people and teaching them the inspections, and then they have to get certified later, and it's my understanding, you said, within a year. I guess my concern would be, what exactly are these people in training doing and inspecting and approving before they get certified? Why would it be so hard or difficult not to have somebody, his boss, the supervisor who is supposed to be certified, go with them on these type of final approvals and make sure it's done correctly? Thank you.
Mr. Delair, do you, since you wish to address that?
Yeah, thank you, Tom Delair for the record. So we, the inspectors that we have today, we have three that are certified in building. There's, there's a, and ICC has a number of certifications that they can have. There's four in residential, there's four in commercial. So we have one individual who just started in December. He has one year to, to take an exam, one of the four to be certified. Our, our policy doesn't say which test he has to have. There's four different tests. There's a building and structural, there's an electrical, and a plumbing, and a mechanical.
I just don't want to be confused when you're finishing up with this. We're talking about electrical inspections. So are you saying that somebody who has a building certification but not an electrical certification can go out and do an electrical inspection and approve it?
Yeah, I'll defer to Tim for that, but I, let me, can I finish, can I finish my thought on everybody else who's, so I've, I've been trying to get a response to you guys in regard, regards to these allegations that Ted's brought forward on, on the actual inspections of each of our, our employees. And we have another individual who I believe is a mechanical, has, has his residential mechanical inspection, a certification that passed his probation because we only required one of those certs. There's another individual in the, in the department that has a building and structural. So I think it's, I think it's just the one building and structural, and he's, he's certified inspector. And then we have another individual who's got seven of these certifications, including one for fire, and there's a residential electrical as well. And then Tim's got both the residential combination and the commercial combination. So, so we do have those certifications, and I'll be happy to send you guys, the board, that information from ICC directly. And, and then, Tim, do you have, can you answer that second part of his question?
Tim Davis for the record, I believe the second question is, is what's the policy or the procedure in place for a new hire in training?
My question was, you have somebody being trained, and you said that they go out on their own and do certain inspections, but that you have some supervisor that supposedly oversees them, but he's not there during all those inspections. And I'm saying, what would, why, what is the policy of having that supervisor there when they do their final inspections and make sure everything's done correctly?
That policy doesn't exist, and if you're recommending that it does, I'm, I'm open for discussion, but I will tell you that each individual gets a certain level of drive-around time with each individual inspector to gain on-the-job training and knowledge, and when we feel comfortable, then we, we allow them to do inspections.
Last question is, I just would like to get an answer from what I'd asked, Mr. Delair. If someone's going out and doing electrical inspection, do they have to be certified for the electrical certification, or can they be a mechanical certification doing electrical work?
Under the code that we have adopted, we can allow them to do electrical inspections under their international residential code. Under the commercial code, given the NRS 278-977, item number four, that states jurisdictions under 100,000, the authority having jurisdiction can delegate those inspections to deputies. We are only doing what every jurisdiction in our area is doing. Do we need to change things? That's up for you gentlemen to discuss and to dictate to us.
So the answer is yes, you allow people that are certified in other areas to do electric inspections. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Reducing it to simplicity, you cited four, four building, building and commercial, right? Reducing it to simplicity, you cited four, four building, building and commercial, right? Four areas. So, ideally, you would have eight people being able to freely go around and inspect, correct? How many people do you have now? How many are authorized? Let's put it that way.
Tom Delary for the record. We have, we have four total inspectors, right, plus you and Tim, is the building official. So, five, five individuals.
Thank you. I got an idea where to put $2 million.
So, Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, okay, so.
Can I, can I just answer a question?
Okay, go ahead.
Following up from public comment. So, Commissioner Turkianian, you know, I think your question about who's telling you or the comments were interesting, I found them interesting, too, because this is the standard that was in 2005. They're, we're not degrading the standard. So, anybody who stands up here and says that it's false. What I heard was that there is some disagreement about how two agencies cooperatively work together, and that is what is driving the opposition. Particularly with East Fork Fire Paramedic District, their fire marshal, if you look her up under the international code, she doesn't have any qualifications. So, I find it kind of interesting that they are up here making comments about the national electrical code when their fire marshal, according to the ICC, doesn't have those. So, anybody who tells you we're lowering the standards, that is false.
Thank you. Mr. Ingles.
Ms. Gregory, I do not concur at all with your defense in this matter. I conducted a personal audit with the chairman of the audit committee, Mr. Cates.
Have you provided a copy of that to the public?
No, I haven't. Please, I'm speaking.
I don't think it's worth raising now.
Okay, okay.
Hold off. I'm telling you what happened, if you're giving the courtesy of finishing.
Mr. Ingles.
What?
Please control your voice.
I didn't, I didn't say anything. She did.
You, you raised your voice. So, please, let's maintain calmness here.
You tell her to control her voice.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll continue.
I would generally, okay, generally, I would take a break here, but I don't, we've already delayed this a long time. So, please, commissioners, can we go forward in a civil manner, please?
So, can I continue?
Yes, you may, in a civil manner. Thank you.
I conducted an audit with a member of the audit committee, and the results of that audit were reviewed with Mr. Cates and Mr. Ritchie. Is that correct? Do you recall that? Over generators installations. It was a mess. The individual who was the inspector was not certified, but was sent out to do these things. The information that he provided was inconsistent with the invoices said in regard to the installations that the residences received, number one. Number two, there was no, no information in regard to a pressure check with the gas line that was going into the generator and run the engines. It was a general mess. Now, it's impossible that this person was being supervised by anybody. I don't know what the SOP is in regard to inspecting a generator, but I know I have an auxiliary generator. It's not real simple. Because the transfer box is a complicated installation where it transfers the power from the generator to the electrical system in the home when the power goes out. Also, there's considerations in regard to elevation, if there's in a flood zone, things of this nature. There was no indication of a pressure check that was completed on the natural gas lines. So, something's wrong. We keep hearing all these things, and this is a personal observation that I saw, and I have witnesses to it. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. I don't know that any additional back and forth is really going to get us anywhere, is my observation. We have exhausted public comment, and I think the questions have been answered by the board. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion. Mr., Mr. Ritchie, you had?
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. I very much appreciate your indulgence. I just want to make clear that this item is about an ordinance that clears up some language in our code. Under NRS, the board sets the qualifications and continuing education requirements for your inspectors and the building official. That is done via resolution. All of the discussion about who should be doing what, what training they should, what certifications, this board absolutely has that authority, and I think the duty to look at it, but you should adopt that via resolution. It's via resolution under Nevada law that sets that this board, not the International Building Code, not any other, this board sets those requirements and continuing education requirements via resolution. There, there seems to be a misapprehension that by adopting this ordinance, that it's going to change anything. No, as Cynthia Gregory pointed out, the, the, the job duties have been in the books for a long time. The previous board changed the code, the international electrical code, a long time ago. What we're trying to do is clean that up. But to be clear, this board via resolution establishes the certification requirements and continuing education requirements for the building official and his or her deputies.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Turkianian.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, and if what you're saying is accurate, that we should be voting yes for the clarification, and that we should be asking the, the staff to prepare a resolution based upon what we're discussing here today, which I certainly would be in favor, because I don't, I, I don't think it's being done the way I would like to see it done. But I guess my question goes back to the, the thing that you guys were saying, I wasn't understanding with the language. You're asking us to eliminate language in there that's, that adds the words except for and puts the stuff in from the certification. So, it seems to me, once we add that language, we're taking away the requirement of certification according to that statute. And I don't feel comfortable doing that, because I think they should be certified. I can understand having a period of time to work under somebody, get them trained, but I mean, somebody who's qualified and certified should be, with electrical work should be the ones signing off on this stuff. So, again, I'm confused on my vote here now because of what you're saying, but the language I read says, if I, if I vote for this, I'm taking out the, the requirement of certification.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Noah said.
Thank you. I think part of what we could resolve here is Ms. Darrett's deletion of a comma. It becomes very clear then how that reads. If we leave that comma there, there's a lot of confusion. So, I would, I would make a friendly amendment, but it's not appropriate at this time.
I would entertain a main motion with any adjustments you wish to make to the language.
Very well.
If you wish to take a stab at that.
I will take a stab at that.
I think Mr. Noah said has asked for permission to make a motion.
I'll cede my, talking over to John.
Mr. Ingles, then.
Mr. Ritchie, I understand what you're saying, but for us to make a decision, we have to understand the totality of all that is involved, and it's not just a paragraph. There's a lot more involved. So, this helps us consolidate and synthesize all of this information that we received today in regard to this matter, because it is not simple. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Noah said, you indicated you were interested in making a motion.
I will take a stab. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2022-1593, and ordnance amending to Douglas County Title 20, Appendix B, National Electric Code revisions, specifically changes to Article 8, 0.27, inspectors qualifications in order to correct and ensure internal consistency and with the definition of electrical inspector and the Nevada revised statutes, Chapter 278 regarding inspector qualifications, with the exception of under Article 8, 80.27A, referring to the, except for the authority having jurisdiction, eliminate the comma.
Do I have a second? Sensing no second, that particular motion is, fails. Do I have a motion? If we have no motion, then I would assume, Mr. Doug, Mr. Ritchie, that we would then require a motion to deny the ordinance, or does the ordinance just flat out die?
No second, no vote.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. The ordinance hasn't died. There was a motion, it, it was, it failed. So, there needs to be a motion to deny or continue for further hearing, whatever the pleasure of the board is. But right now, the, the ordinance hasn't been adopted.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rice.
I would move that for the moment, we table this ordinance and bring it back for further definition and clarification of the articles involved.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Rice. Do we have a second to table this motion for, for a further date?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turkianian. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Rice and a motion, or seconded by Commissioner Turkianian to table this item to a further date. So, any discussion on that particular motion?
I move to deny the motion.
That motion is out of order right now because we're in a motion to, to table. So, Mr. Noah said, okay. Okay, sensing none, all those in favor of tabling this to a later date, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four to zero, four to one to table. So, we'll have to bring this back for further discussion. Thank you. So, anyways, here it is, 1 o'clock. My sincere apologies, I, I had no concept that this would go. I knew it would take long, but I didn't think it would take quite this long, an hour and 20 minutes. So, my apologies to my fellow commissioners and to the members of the public. We are going to take a lunch break until 2 o'clock at this time. I would ask that for the security of the building, all members of the public, please exit the chambers as soon as possible so that we can have staff secure the building. Thank you. Or secure the anyways this room. Thank you. We'll reconvene at 2 o'clock. Ms. Reeves, Ms. Reeve? Ms. Reeve? Okay. I will be moving your agenda item up to the first thing at 2 o'clock, because I respect the idea that you spent considerable amount of time here already, so. because I respect the idea that you spent considerable amount of time here already, so.
third meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting and Ms. Reeve has been here for obviously several hours as we have but anyways we didn't expect the last item to necessarily go quite so long but that's fine so you never know what's going to happen but in respect for that I'm going to take the prerogative to move item number nine of a possible action to the next item on the agenda so we've dispensed with item six we will delay seven and eight and go to number nine on the agenda which is being presented by what is it I'm not sure what your title is anymore Mr. Booth but anyways glad to have you here so anyways and we have the applicant also here so item number nine is for possible action discussion to approve a waiver for the requirement to install a fire sprinkler system in a manufactured home for Ralph and Linda Reeve at 3800 Sapphire Road in Wellington Nevada APN 1022-15-002-004 as required under section 903.2 of the International Fire Code as set out in appendix B of Title 20 of the Douglas County Code before we go to Mr. Booth I would like to make sure that it's clear that even though it says Wellington Nevada Wellington is technically in Lyon County however the Topaz Ranch Estates area of our county does get its mail from Wellington and that's why it says Wellington here I share that same type of address because I live in Topaz Ranch Estates so I wanted to make sure that I was clear that we're not talking about something that is in Lyon County we don't have any jurisdiction over Lyon County so anyways with that is it Deputy Director of Community Development did I get that title right okay Mr. Sam Booth.
That's correct Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you Sam Booth for the record this agenda item number nine as you read this is discussion to approve a waiver of the requirement to install fire sprinklers in a manufactured home as the board may remember in March of 20 March 18th of 2021 the board approved ordinance 2021-1580 which amended appendix B of Title 20 and provided a new section laid out several conditions by which an appeal of the requirement for fire sprinklers could be applied for and could be approved by the board in your packet on page 453 there's an application from Ralph and Linda Reeve applying for just that the requirement to an appeal from the requirement to install fire sprinklers I'm just here this afternoon to tell you that they have a complete application believe that the requirements of the code have been met by the Reeves there's a statement from Clayton Homes as to the cost before installation of fire sprinklers cost after installation of fire sprinklers believe there's a letter from them to the commission we included a on page 461 there's an image of their property on Sapphire Road 3800 Sapphire Road would note that there was an existing manufactured home on the property they're replacing with a new manufactured home and there's some elevations floor plans for the home that they proposed to set there and would just otherwise note that Ms. Reeve is here to speak on her behalf and also in supplemental materials that were submitted today we have a letter from Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal Amy Ray that made some points about the purpose of fire sprinklers and just the fire department and her opposition to the application today.
Thank you any questions or Mr. Booth seeing note okay.
This is a pretty remote area is it not?
That may depend on how you define that Commissioner but generally yes yeah it's in the southern portion of the county in TRE it's I think I had that in the packet here but it's about a two acre lot.
Okay so anyways I believe we've had several of these come before us previously in the last year that we've approved I have to disclose that I had a manufactured home myself in the Lodi area of California that was also a Clayton home and so I'm familiar with that with that building process and familiar with those homes and I can attest that those homes other than being other than the foundation that they sit on and it's extremely difficult unless you're the purchaser of it to determine whether or not it's actually a stick built home or a manufactured home so but so I'm familiar with those building requirements but anyways we do have the applicant here before we go to public comment I suppose we should give the applicant the opportunity to speak before us as well so I know you started out your public comment earlier and I asked you to come back and do this at this time and so if you would Ms. Reeve go to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself what you're doing. yourself, what you're doing and what you're doing with this property. I do know that it's a little over two acres, as I understand. It's in my neighborhood, actually, TRE, Topaz Ranch Estates, about a mile and a half maybe from where I live. So please avail yourself of the microphone. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that this project started about two and a half, three years ago, and there was no discussion of sprinklers at that time. And I wouldn't have wanted them anyway. I mean, if they were free, I still don't want indoor sprinklers. But my husband and I will keep the property cleared. He's got backhoes and equipment, and that's fun for him. And maybe we'll even help our neighbors if they want us to help clear their property. We were out there in our travel trailer last summer watching those wildfires, and it's very tragic. And I think that sprinklers indoors, I don't think it's going to stop a wildfire. I don't think it's going to save your house. So and it's awfully expensive. So we've signed the waiver, and we just hope that you guys will let us go on this one.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate you keeping your keeping your comments concise and quick. So at this time, it's for possible action. So with that, we'll go to a public comment within the chambers, and then we'll ask Ms. Marsha if there's any public comment online.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Adam Wenhold on behalf of the East Fork Professional Firefighters. We are the employee firefighters for the East Fork Fire District, which services the property in question. There is a big misconception in the community that fire sprinklers are for wildland fires. They're not. They're for structure fires. And let me explain why that's important. If we keep the fire to its room of origin and as small as possible, it gives the people that live there the most opportunity to get out. That's the primary purpose, is to get people out of the house safely, because smoke is toxic, especially modern smoke that that's, you know, made out of plastics, and it produces all sorts of hydrocarbon compounds, hydrogen cyanide, all sorts of things that frankly aren't conducive with human life. And if we keep these fires as small as possible by popping that little sprinkler head, you know, just like her in this building, it keeps that fire there, it gives them time to get out, it gives the Fire Department time to respond. That's the second part of what I'd like to bring up, is the Fire District is challenged geographically and staffing-wise. There are only three firefighters that are staffed in that area 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And let me tell you why that's important. When we respond to a fire at that residence, we're 1,500 feet away from the closest fire hydrant. It's roughly roughly at Granite Road over there. And one of those guys has to drive a water truck. It's a 3,000 gallon water truck. So that means there's only two guys. One guy pumps the fire engine, the other firefighter pumps the the truck that leaves the captain, who's trying to supervise and and manage the incident. This brings us up a federal requirement created by OSHA and NHTSA called two in, two out. In order for firefighters to attack a fire where there isn't a life safety hazard, hopefully the residence evacuated, and everything's fine there, we are obligated by federal statute to stay outside of the building until a fourth firefighter shows up. At that point, that's about a 20-minute response time from the Gardenville Ranches or Mendenham. So keeping that fire small and contained to the room of origin will absolutely be critical to keeping keeping their house as intact as possible, as well as their contents. People worry about water damage. Well, it's not, doesn't do a lot of good when the whole, your whole house is burned up in the meantime. Anyway, that's kind of the summary of why I think fire sprinklers are important, why the association thinks fire sprinklers are important, and why we support the ordinance as it presently stands. Thank you.
He's not the Fire Department.
He's not.
I speak for the association, not the Fire District.
Okay, so he's not from the Fire Department. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Since no additional public comment in chambers, is there any online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board then. Any other questions or concerns?
My only concern, I was going to ask this with the question, you know, yeah, everybody wants to be as safe as they possibly can, and we want to protect us as best as possible. But everybody also has a certain living budget or amount of money they can spend. Home ownership is important to people, and actually, ownership of where they reside is very important, particularly as my understanding this is a property you guys have owned for a long period of time. And someone, did somebody just pass away or something? You moved in there? In either regards, you know, there's got to be a balancing act between what people can afford and the safety that's provided to them. And, you know, these are adults. They understand the risks. In their application, she wrote down, they understood the risk and were willing to accept it. And it's a 15% increase from $140,000 per acre. That's a lot of money. Anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you. Any additional? Or entertain a motion?
Just a sec, I got to go back up to the beginning. I'll make a motion to approve a waiver from the requirement for the installation of an automatic sprinkler system for Ralph and Linda Reeve at 3800 Sapphire Road, Wellington, Nevada, APN 1022-15-002-004, based upon the facts presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Mr. Noah Sad. Any further discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four to one. You're good to go. And thank you for sticking around, and I hope your first experience with the Board of Commissioners expected, whatever that was. The only worst thing, I think, Ms. Reeve, the only thing I think worse than this is going to the dentist. So anyway, right, Mr. Noah Sad? Anyways, okay, so now we'll go back to item number seven for possible action. And seven and eight are pretty much, are they kind of joined at the hip almost, or are they not? So, okay, so we'll take them individually, though. For possible action, number seven, discussion on the adoption of ordinance 2022-1596, an ordinance abolishing the office of Constable for the East Fork Township, appointing the Douglas County Sheriff as the ex officio Constable, and providing for other properly related matters. This is the second reading. Mr. Cates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As discussed when this was heard previously, this ordinance would abolish the office of the Constable in reference to the retirement of the current Constable, Mr. Paul Gilbert. His term would terminate, his term would finish at the end of this calendar year, and at which point this ordinance would take effect. So this ordinance abolishes the office. Item number eight is a resolution to appoint the Sheriff as ex officio. And I would also like to convey to the board that I have worked with the, all of the judges, particularly Judge Jones, East Fork Township, as well as the Sheriff, to make sure everybody's amenable to this change. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Cates? So I have one question, Mr. Ritchie, can we wrap seven and eight into one motion, or would you prefer to have two separate motions?
Thank you, Chairman Doug Ritchie, with the District Attorney's Office. You could have one motion. You need to read the title of the resolution item in the record as well, but you could have one, one discussion. You combine the items.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. So based on that, then, we need to go to a public comment.
I would like to make a comment before we go there.
Go ahead.
When I first saw this, I was taken aback a little bit, having been a deputy constable for a good number of years, and having worked with and being a friend of Mr. Gilbert, I took it upon myself to talk to him to make sure that he was okay with this. He has been our constable for over 40 years. And when I asked him about it, he said that, you know, nobody that he talked to cared about what the job was, nor did they have any idea what it was. And that they seemed more interested in what the salary was and how many days off a year they got. And by moving this over to the Sheriff's Department, we are going to continue to have post-certified officers in the courtroom. The judges that I have talked to are good with this. And I want to thank and congratulate our constable for his many years of service to this community, and for all of the retired sheriff deputies that he took under his wing for all those years to keep this office going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, any other Commissioners have comments on this? Okay, then we'll go to the chambers for public comment. Sensing no public comment, everybody seems to be texting each other on their cell phones. Just an observation. Seeing, is Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Sense a motion?
Mr. Chairman, having, having been a deputy constable for a good number of years, I would move that we adopt ordinance 2022-1596, abolishing the office of Constable as presented.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, to adopt ordinance 2022-1596, abolishing the office of Constable for the East Fork Township, and appointing the Douglas County Sheriff as the ex officio Constable, providing for other properly related matters. Sensing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. We'll move to item number eight for possible action, discussion on the adoption of resolution 2022R-026, appointing the Douglas County Sheriff, the ex officio Douglas County Constable. Mr. Cates, I think you've already spoken, but if you have anything to add to that?
Nothing to add, sir.
Okay, Commissioners? Go to public comment. Any public comment on that? Sensing no public comment, Ms. Johnson? You're going to get your mileage in today, aren't you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2022R-026, appointing the Douglas County Sheriff as the ex officio Douglas County Constable as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, I believe that was Mr. Noah Sad that made it, seconded. Okay, any discussion? Sensing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we will move to item number 10 for possible action, discussion to approve a $7 million, $7,268,350 construction manager at risk contract with Sierra Nevada Construction Incorporated for a portion of the Cave Rock Water System Improvement Project Water Distribution Pipeline, GMP 3A, Distribution Phase B, and authorize the county manager to sign any necessary documents. Do we have, oh, we have Mr. Richter and Mr. McCullough? Rover, Rover Lard. Okay. Scott's on this, but anyways, anyways, oh, okay. Okay, gentlemen?
Commissioners, Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. Need some technical assistance, we've got a presentation.
Rick Robillard, Deputy Director of Public Works, for the record. I'm going to walk through a brief presentation to give some project background. This presentation's been given before, but as we move through the project, we continuously update the information. The presentation outline, we're going to go through a project summary, proposed contracts and budgets, and then the recommended actions. So historically, in 2020, we did a water line replacement at the Cave Rock Water System. That was Project 19W02. It was a $1.6 million project. Approximately, we did 3,000 linear feet of water main with 12 services, and that project scope was along Cave Rock Drive and Winding Way. 2021 water line replacement, that was part of this Cave Rock Water System Improvement Projects, that was the first phase called GMP 3A. That was a $4.9 million CMAR contract in the Cave Rock area as well. That project installed approximately 8,500 linear feet of pipe and 52 service connections. That is complete. Currently, within the water treatment plant and lake intake, we came previously on GMP 1A and 2 for a total of $4.7, $4.8 million CMAR contract, which scope of work was for the replacement of the filtration skid at the Cave Rock Treatment Plant, and also lake intake upgrades. Those projects are currently in process. We are in the middle of the treatment plant upgrades right now, and the lake intake upgrades are scheduled to begin in April. So here today, we are here for the 2022 water line replacement, which is GMP 3B, which is the final phase of the Cave Rock Water System Improvement Projects. And this is a 7.269 million CMAR project, which will replace water lines throughout the lake ridge, hidden woods, and along Highway 50 front edge, all part of the Cave Rock Water System. So project contracts, currently active contracts with this. So we have the HDR project design contract. We have the CMAR pre-construction services contract with Sierra Nevada Construction and Core. We have the GMP 1B, which is the water treatment equipment procurement contract. We have, we had the completed GMP 3A water line replacement contract. We have the GMP 1A, which is the water treatment plant upgrades, and then the GMP 2, which was the lake intake system. So today's current contract is the GMP 3B, which is the water line, second phase of the water line project. So on this table, you'll see in the, I guess, purple or lavender, that's executed contracts to date. So those are actual numbers incurred as part of the project. Today's project, our, today's contract is going to be in the green, and anticipated future contracts are going to be in the pink or salmon. So you look at a total project cost to date with current contracts, today's contract and future contracts at $20,252,335. So here's a budget summary on where funding sources came from. So we received a U.S. Forest Service grant of $500,000, which we had to match with 500,000. We received 250,000 of SRF principal forgiveness, and we got a $16.25 million loan through the SRF fund. And then 4.1 million with our cap, Fund 320. And then 4.1 million with our cap, Fund 328 capital reserves. So there's currently a balance of $8.786 million available to complete the project. This contract today would encumber 7.268 million of those. The recommended action would be to approve this contract with the $7,268,350 CMAR contract with Sierra Nevada for GMP 3B. And with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, concerns? Yes, Mr.?
I have a couple of questions. Who inspects your work?
Depending on the work. So for the water line replacements, we have a construction manager that inspects the work. So we have a field inspector that makes sure that it's being built per plans and specifications. So they do daily field inspections. They do soil compaction tests. They do, they witness the pipeline pressure tests. They witness the disinfection. They witness the bacteriological tests. And those are all documented in field logs. So that's a third-party consultant. So CME, which is Construction Materials Engineers, do that. And any of the, for the treatment plant, we're going to have them have specialty inspectors inspecting that as well. So it's third-party inspectors, to answer your question.
Thank you. And in regard to the treatment plant, is there an estimated lifespan?
The microfiltration skids have an estimated lifespan of 20 years. Electrical is about 20 years. Structural is, depends on, you know, the components. So I would say anywhere between a 20 and 25-year life cycle.
Thank you.
Additional comments? So if I'm reading this right, this is next to the last allocation?
Correct.
And what's left over, I mean, this seems to be like a continuing saga. But after this, we're looking at a final one of, what, 210,000? Is that?
Correct. That'll be, we'll be bringing for the Construction Materials Engineering Inspection Contract for the water line projects to do the inspections, like I just talked about, for water line installation.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions? We'll open the floor to public comment in chambers. Sensing no public comment in chambers, Ms. Johnson, do you have public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the board. Any additional questions? Otherwise, we'll entertain a vote, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve $7,268,350 contract with Sierra Nevada Construction Incorporated as a construction manager at risk for a portion of the Cave Rock Water System Improvement Project as presented and authorized by the county manager to sign any necessary documents.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to approve the $7,268,350 construction manager at risk for Sierra Nevada Construction. Sensing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll see you one more time, I guess. Okay. Moving right along. Item number 11 for possible action, discussion to authorize the settlement of a lawsuit filed by nine plaintiffs in the United States District Court on July 8, 2021, case number 3:21-CV-00293 against Douglas County, with each party to pay its own attorney's fees and costs and authorizing Chairman Gardner to sign the settlement agreement and any other required documents. Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with Douglas County District Attorney's Office. This involves the county's recent amendments to the VHR regulations. As the board is aware, the county was sued in federal court. The plaintiffs alleged various violations, alleged violations of their constitutional rights. In January 6, the board considered some, a possible settlement agreement. The board had some reservations regarding some of the terms. Subsequent to that, two members of the Board of County Commissioners have met with a representative of the plaintiffs, and a revised settlement agreement has been proposed. That settlement agreement is now brought forward to the board and to the public for consideration and discussion. I will just hit the highlights. There's a lot of details in it, but it's essentially the same proposal from the January 6th board meeting. However, there are some changes. The first one is the cap on Tier 1 and Tier 3 VHR permits will remain at 600 and not be increased to 650. That's found in the proposed ordinance 20.622.030A. Also, there was an issue regarding how long property owners who held multiple VHR permits would be allowed to maintain those multiple permits. The plaintiffs had initially asked that they be granted in perpetuity the right to maintain the permits that they had when the ordinance was adopted in June 3 of last year. The proposal was initially to allow them until December 31, 2031, to maintain those multiple permits. That has been changed to October 1, 2024. The owner must still renew the VHR permits annually and otherwise comply with all other VHR regulations. In essence, the county is giving these VHR permit holders approximately 2.5 years from the adoption of the amended VHR regulations to change their business model, to sell their properties, or to otherwise come in compliance with the VHR regulations. There was also another change regarding VHR occupancy. Previously, the board had limited occupancy to two per bedroom. There was some discussion about an additional plus four or plus two. After further negotiations, it was agreed that if the property had four or fewer bedrooms and there was available onsite parking, an additional bonus two could be available. So occupancy is two per bedroom plus two if the property has four or less bedrooms and there is available onsite parking. Another item that was agreed to is that the fine, the maximum fine was restored to $20,000 from the current $5,000. The defendants have agreed that it's appropriate for the county to have in its options the ability to have, assess a maximum fine of $20,000 for the worst offenders. Again, I think all the parties agreed that those who are illegally operating a VHR and have no intent to comply with the VHR regulations should be treated differently than those who are trying to get a permit or otherwise complying but somehow may have failed to comply with all the regulations. Also in this, the parties agreed that liability would be expanded to those individuals who assist VHR property owners market or manage those VHR properties without a valid VHR permit. Previously, the penalties found in the Douglas County Code only apply to the VHR property owner. I think all the parties agreed that someone that is a property manager assisting in the illegal operation of VHR should also be subject to the penalties found in the county code. And finally, there's a number of items, but finally, one of the larger items was that the defendants understand fundamentally that the Board of County Commissioners are representatives of the people. You represent the people, and you need to have the ability to modify ordinances, to take into account the environment. Things change. So they have agreed with the county commissioners to not make any further changes to the VHR regulations until either the VHR Advisory Board submits its findings and recommendations to the county commissioners or three months have passed from the approval of the settlement agreement, whichever comes first. So again, the idea is to allow the VHR Advisory Board time to see how the regulations are working, gather information, and make recommendations to this board. However, if they're taking too long, after three months, this board can take action on its own. Just other, couple of other highlights. VHR permits continue to be non-assignable and must be renewed annually. There must be proof of liability insurance from a company regulated by the Nevada Division of Insurance. Closely-held corporations or other similar legal entities can own VHR permits. If the entity is owned by family members and the members agree to be, and the members agree to be personally responsible for the entity's compliance with the VHR regulations. As I explained before, it's kind of like a corporation getting a bank loan. The officers have to personally guarantee the loan, even though it's the corporation that's getting the loan. The corporation, any of the members have to agree to be personally responsible for compliance. And finally, the plaintiffs have agreed to waive any claim for damages. Each party is to bear their own attorney's fees and costs. I will say that it's been a long process, and I do want to thank the Commissioners who participated in the settlement conference with Magistrate Carla Baldwin and the two Commissioners who subsequently continued to try and work with the plaintiffs to revise the proposed settlement terms so that we can come to this point for the public's review and this board's consideration and possible adoption. I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions, Mr. Ritchie? Being an action item, then, we will go to public comment. Is there any public comment at this time?
Dan Ainsworth. Very simply said, I think you should vote yes on this agreement. Get it in place. Let's get on with it and let code enforcement and the new management team and the advisory board do their jobs. All of them will come back with feedback as time goes on here. I know the advisory board has already started that process, so you should hear something relatively soon. So, and I think, I will just say this, I know one of the plaintiffs is in the room, but I think Douglas County got a great settlement this time. You got just about everything you wanted, but the only thing you didn't get was the plus two on Tier 2 only. And just one comment, Mr. DA. You mentioned that the cap applied to Tier 1 and Tier 3. It's Tier 2 and Tier 3. Tier 1 is the one that's not in the cap. So please vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ainsworth. Any additional public comment? Ms. Dara?
Virginia Dara. Yeah, I too think that this is just fabulous work on the part of the board. I really commend you for not going forward with the original settlement and taking that bold step of turning it down and then renegotiating so that we could keep some of the really important parts of the original VHR section that you put together, especially, I think, the $20,000 fine that can still be, in some cases, levied since the profits from these VHRs are really big, and you need to have something that can pinch the person who's violating the VHR and make them think twice about doing that. I also would like to note that when I read the agenda, I was a little perplexed by the way this particular agenda item was written because unless you had some previous knowledge that there was this lawsuit out there that would have nine defendants, I mean, that description was kind of an odd description. And nowhere in the description did it mention the word or the letters VHR. So I thought it wasn't very transparent. I thought a member of the public wouldn't really get much clue that this was going to be about the VHR lawsuit that was a pretty big deal in the county. I would recommend that you be more careful in making sure that the language in an agenda item actually gives enough information for a, you know, person who's not super informed to have some clue as to what is actually being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dara. And Mr. McCallum?
I really just want to congratulate the board for not being intimidated. So many public bodies, there's a lawsuit, they cave in, they're afraid to see it through, but staying the course and getting, I think, is the best agreement you could get. I appreciate that. I just want to congratulate you and ask you to vote yes on this.
Thank you. And Ms. Gunter?
Hello, board members. Heidi Gunter, for the record. I look forward to being an advocate for healthy tourism in Lake Tahoe, weeding out the bad apples so that those of us who are operating vacation rentals correctly can maybe be an example for everyone else who may not be running them correctly. So those of us who live full-time in Tahoe can have our quiet enjoyment while tourism is happening at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? If not, Ms. Marsha, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Bring it to the, back to the board. Ms. Dara, you often, you're a wordsmith, and we appreciate that. But I did notice something in your comments. You said there were nine defendants. Actually, there are nine plaintiffs. There are 49,488 defendants, which is the current population of the county. We are here to defend them. Okay? So there were nine plaintiffs. Just, just an observation, okay? So I don't get that opportunity very often with Ms. Dara. Anyways, okay. Any additional comments by, by board members? If not, then I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Tarkanian?
First of all, I wanted to thank the speakers for so intelligently seeing how this settlement agreement came about and the end results. I've gotten a number of emails, probably because I've been one of the strongest advocates against VHRs. So I've received a number of emails from people encouraging me not to vote for this settlement agreement. And basically, the main reasoning was, they said, well, you're going to encourage other people to sue the county, and, and by settling with them, that's going to be an encouragement. And that was my initial concern when I spoke with the district attorney about this settlement is, I don't want anybody to think that this board is going to settle just because somebody files a lawsuit against us. And the district attorney did not feel this would be the case. He felt that it might even have the opposite effect because we had received such great terms in this settlement and that the plaintiffs incurred an incredible cost financially, with having to pay their attorney fees probably in excess of $100,000. And the, what we have given up as a county has been very, very little when you take into consideration the permanent injunction issued by the judge. So I think that's not the case. I think the fact is, the terms of this settlement are very, very advantageous to us, and that's why I'm going to vote for it. I want to make it clear to the public, there's two things that were changed in this. The first is, the plaintiffs wanted, in perpetuity, to own multiple permits. They went down to 10 years with the first settlement agreement. They came back to us with five years. I didn't want to go higher than a year and a half. The plaintiffs didn't agree with that. And in the interim, the district, the federal district court judge issued a permanent injunction. And the only thing he really issued that hurt us was he eliminated our ability to fine serious, willfully serious violators $20,000. Well, that's the whole teeth of the, of the ordinance. If you don't have a fine that's going to make it not worthwhile for someone to violate it, they're going to continue to violate it. So the federal judge, whether he doesn't understand what $20,000 gets you today or doesn't understand the importance of that, he took away the teeth of our ordinance. So in exchange for getting the teeth back, where we can fine these serious violators with $20,000, we gave up two and a half years of multiple up two and a half years of multiple permits instead of one and a half years. I think that's a win on our part. Second thing with respect to what Dan, Mr. Ainsworth said, we did give up two more occupants per bedroom through four bedrooms, but that's only if there's enough parking spots available. And when I met with some of the advisory board members, we drove through Lake Tahoe, and they showed us the different areas of where there are problems. Their biggest issue was the lack of parking when people had too many people staying at the VHRs and the problem the parking caused. Well, again, the federal judge, he still has to agree to the settlement, so I'll be careful of my wording, but he didn't understand the problems caused by not allowing us to restrict occupancy by the parking. It was really one of the worst things he could do with us getting an effective ordinance done. In fact, Jennifer Davidson, who handles the VHRs for the county, said that was the most important issue. The advisory board said that was the most important issue. So for us to get parking, occupancy tied back to parking put in, we gave up two additional people in tier two VHRs, only if there's enough parking. I would like to see it restricted completely to parking, but I guess it's only if it's an additional two people. But that's something the advisory board can change, which I think is the other good thing. In three months, the advisory board can come back and say, hey, look, we need a little bit stronger restrictions on parking and give us the reasons why. We could have that on the record, and I think that that's going to stick. So I was very happy with the settlement agreement. I know that some people that have emailed me may be disappointed, but I think if they look at this in totality, they should be happy also. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Well, I will echo what Mr. Tarkanian is saying. I would also echo some of the comments by the members of the public in chambers. I think we, our hats off are to Commissioner Rice and Ingles who approached the settlement conference initially, and then my fellow commissioners for coming back with this particular agreement. So I think we've done, I think we've done a very commendable job ourselves, and I appreciate the patience of the community in that regard. I also want to, this ordinance or this particular action will still require us to come back with the appropriate changes to the ordinance itself that will come forward, I believe, at the next meeting and presentation so that we can get this in place. So I'm hopeful that I have concurrence with my fellow commissioners here on the passage of this particular motion. So anyways, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt this settlement agreement. Any others?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agreement. I'll get you the language if you give me a second. Thank you. But this doesn't give the motion, does it? It doesn't on this. Bear with me. I'm sorry.
Commissioner, I think what you wanted to say was you moved to approve the settlement agreement as presented and authorized Chairman Gardner to sign the settlement agreement and any other required documents on behalf of Douglas County.
You are so good. So who's going to make the motion?
Commissioner Rice.
Okay. Is that a motion by Mr. Tarkanian, seconded by Mr. Rice? I don't know that it... You may be correct that in the minutes later on. Anyways, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Mr. Rice, to approve the settlement agreement as it is. Since he no further comment, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Looks like it passes five to zero. That is terrific. Hats off to us. Mr. Ritchie, you have your direction of bringing that, changes to the ordinance back to us. Thank you. Okay. Yay. Yay, yay. Okay. Anyways, item number 12 then is for presentation-only reports, updates from county commission members concerning the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to or meeting functions they have attended. And we'll start down at the end there with Mr. Tarkanian. Anything to report?
No.
Okay. Mr. Noasad?
Yes.
Good.
I was on the Debt Management Commission last week, and they beat the record. Previous record was starting at 1:00 and being done at 1:10. Last time was as I heard of 1:00, adjourned at 1:05. My kind of meeting.
Mr. Ingles, anything to report? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rice?
I attended the TTD meeting earlier this week, the Tahoe Transportation Division. There's so many of them by acronyms and letters that I have to keep a scorecard to figure them out sometimes. But we were talking about the microtransit, and it looks like we're very close to having an agreement between El Dorado County, Douglas County, City of South Lake Tahoe, the Forest Service, the various casinos, STAR, and other entities to finally fund and get the microtransit running by the end of this year. So that'll be coming before the board at a future date, but there's agreement in general to get this thing taken care of. So that's one more milestone.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. While it's public knowledge, I did attend the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce board meeting yesterday morning where it was noticed that Bentley, Chris Bentley and his wife have noticed the community that they are going to divest of all assets in Douglas County, including the tremendous efforts out at the Bentley Heritage Distillery. So we are certainly hopeful, as the Chamber of Commerce and myself also, as I'm sure members of the community, very hopeful that that historic building is taken over by somebody else to continue to operate it intact as it is now. So anyways, that was an interesting fact to find out on Tuesday night and then again noticed in the... So we wish Chris and Camille Bentley the best, you know, best wishes as they depart our county. So anyways, with that, we will now open the floor to closing public comment.
Don't everybody rush to the microphone at once. Mr. Gaines?
Ted Gaines. I thank commissioners for, it looks like, putting a little time into this electrical item that was on the thing. Appreciate that they looked into it. Like I say, it's something I've been kind of saying for two, three years. I've been seeing it going with this county. I've mentioned it to our county manager with no effect. The lady that called in on the phone said a very strong statement about the building official. I've watched everything deteriorate. I watched people get penalized and punished unjustly by it. When he took over with our previous building official, everybody was certified. It's like, oh, Mrs. Noonstalls, every inspector we had was certified. Now none of them are. But they're all good old friends and whatnot. We don't need friends. We need quality for the people moving in this county. The county's got a good reputation. We need to keep it that way. Secondly, I would sure like you guys to rethink. Like I said, I looked up in the books, and I remember coming here in the 80s. All the meetings were at one. I'd like to see you reconsider that. It worked for four or 50 years. Pretty good. I got no less than four calls last week. What happened to the meeting in the afternoon? Because people clogged in at 1:00 and on, but we were made, I told them we were made aware of it before the meeting started, that we're probably going to go through lunch and get out of here. I think that was wrong. I don't think that was consideration of the people. One other thing is, two meetings ago, I was meeting, talking to Mr. Ritchie over there, and our county manager used a person's name I supposedly got information from. That's profiling. That's discrimination. I want to make sure that's on the record in case anything comes of that. I was hoping the DA would get that information by now, but I'll make sure he does have it. Other than that, I thank you guys for the time you put in on that item six, because it's a very important item to our first responders, to our citizens, to our county. As I gave you the brochures, the thing says you can't lower integrity of the law. And by not having qualified inspectors, I would believe we're doing that. I think you guys would believe the same thing. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Virginia Darrett. I want to address agenda item four. That was for presentation only, which was the refinancing of the community center bonds. I am aware that many in this county believe the community center on Waterloo is essential and something to be proud to have in our county. And yet, I am not reconciled to how the community center came into existence after voters resoundingly said no, they didn't want it, twice. We have almost 50,000 folks living in this county, and a survey shows that something less than 3,000 actually regularly use the community center. All of us are paying for it, though. Our taxes pay for it. So those who don't use it are being forced to subsidize the activities of those who do. That doesn't sit well with me, particularly when I recall the fact that the way the community center was approved and built was by employing devious means to get around the voters. Included in those devious means was the commissioners voting to incur general obligation bonds without a vote of the people. Do you know that my husband and I went so far as to go to the legislature and propose a bill that would add clarification to the NRS that stated that a general obligation bond required a vote of the people? And do you know after that, that the Legislative Council Bureau actually laughed in our faces when we insisted that the NRS must need clarification because our county was ignoring it? They didn't believe us at first. When they finally got the picture, they assisted us, and a bill, watered down, of course, was passed. But all we could get was a process to challenge a governmental entity when it violated the NRS that mandated that a general obligation bond required, no exceptions, a vote of the people. So here we are again today, adding injury, insult to injury. Today, this county is going to contemplate once again violating the NRS by taking on a general obligation bond without a vote of the people. I get it. We'll save $337,000. After all, the ends justify the means. Wait, I think I've heard that somewhere. Machiavelli, I think. No, probably at the original commissioners' meeting where the community center bonds were approved. A county of law and order supporters should demand better ethics than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darrett. Any additional public comment?
If I could see what that comment was, I repeat, somebody who said something.
Pardon me? Yeah, I mean, it's open to public comment. So, Ms. Meyer?
Dana Meyer. I can't even imagine how somebody would not think that that community center was the biggest accomplishment that this county probably made. If you've ever gone there for lunch and seen the senior citizens there, most of them don't ever get out of their homes unless that bus picks them up and takes them to lunch. It is wonderful. I also am with CERT. We had all those fires. Guess where all those people who were forced out of their homes? They were down at the community center. And it's, I mean, you see people of all ages. The most important thing, too, is to see these kids after school who have an opportunity to play basketball, to be involved in all these sports. It's the kids who don't have anywhere to go after school who end up getting in trouble. And I think there were so many advantages that that community center added to this community. So, thank you for doing it.
If someone robs a bank and builds a hostel...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Anyways, since he no other further public comment here in chambers, I will take it to the online public comment. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, gentlemen, it's 3:03, and I will, at this time, then, call the meeting of the March 3 meeting of the Board of Commissioners adjourned. Thank you.